The city council meeting for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado for August 26th, 2019. If you would please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Would the clerk please call the roll of the members?
Zachary Urban.
Present.
David Keeter.
Present.
Amanda Weaver.
Here.
Leah Dozeman.
Here.
Kristy Davis.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Larry Matthews.
Here.
Janice Hoppy.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, we have a quorum.
Thank you. We do not have any proclamations or ceremonies tonight, so we will move to the next agenda item, which would be the approval of minutes from a prior meeting, and there are none of those. We will now move to approval of the agenda. Are there any objections, including the consent agenda items? Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Matthews? Thank you. Yes, I would like to pull out item 1A, please, as I give you a message. Okay, we will remove item 1A for a separate consideration. Mr. Urban.
Likewise.
Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Matthews. Need you to it. With that, we will move through the consent with agenda item number 1A, considered as a separate item after item 1B and 1C. We are now at our citizens' right to speak. This is a portion of our meeting tonight where citizens who wish to speak may come and speak on any matter not on the agenda for a maximum of three minutes, signing the public roster comment here, and I have several people on here. When you come, when I call your name, if you would come to the podium and adjust the microphone so that you can speak clearly into it, give us your first name and your last name, if you would spell your last name for the record, and give us your address. You will have three minutes after that introduction. And our first speaker is Julia Reese and Sam Carpenter on deck, and I will apologize upfront if I mispronounce your name, but I will do the very best I can.
Thank you. My name is Julia Reese, R-E-E-S-E, and I live at 3348 Swadley, and I simply am here to-
Excuse me, hold on, get Mr. Art to help you. And can you seat the mic, Steve? I'm not sure the mic is seated in its housing. Good, okay, I'm sorry.
And I simply am here to state that I'm very concerned about the increase in traffic on West 32nd Avenue, and I would like to ask the council to not move forward on any more development or zone changes at all without considering the incredibly difficult situation that has already been created with the increase of traffic on West 32nd Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sam Carpenter and Greg Reese on deck.
Evening, Sam Carpenter, C-A-R-P-E-N-T-E-R. I'm also here to speak about the traffic issues at 32nd and Kipling. And, yes. At 32nd and Kipling and the potentially proposed development at that corner. Last week, a builder held a neighborhood meeting to propose and explain a potential multifamily development on an open lot at 32nd and Kipling. The proposal included plans for a 60-unit townhome development with parking to accommodate 124. Currently, this property of approximately six acres is zoned R1, single-family, as is all surrounding areas within an approximate mile radius, and obviously, the developer will be applying to be rezoned to either R3 or planned residential development. At that neighborhood meeting last week, roughly 200 residents attended and, from my observation, 100% opposed this proposal. Research in the envisioned Wheat Ridge Comprehensive Plan enacted in 2009, as well as additional updated neighborhood revitalization strategies, this particular lot would not be defined as an established neighborhood, with the neighborhood goal of NH1 to maintain and enhance the quality and character of the city's established neighborhood. On a personal note, I reside in Paramount Heights. I live on Skyline, the first street south of 32nd and Kipling. The increased traffic at that intersection has hindered myself from leaving or getting to my residence, crossing Kipling to enjoy the park and open space, and traveling north to spend my money at retail locations within city limits. The proposed multifamily development would only increase that traffic, not only for myself, but the residents of Paramount Heights and the residents of Applewood Knowles. Again, this type of proposal should be reserved for the mixed-use and buffer zones of the city where the traffic could be controlled in a better manner. While discussing ways to improve the flow and safety for the intersection, I strongly urge the planning committee and the city council to revisit what is defined as established neighborhood if or when a proposal for multifamily zoning is requested for this lot. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Greg Reese and Corey Stites on deck.
My name is Greg Reese, and I live at 3348 Swadley Street off of 32nd, and I oppose this potential development at 32nd and Kipling. And with all that's going on in Wheat Ridge, I don't, I just don't see how this is going to work very well, and I would like city council to stand up and say no. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Corey Stites and John Bakken on deck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Corey Stites, 11885 West 35th Avenue. Tonight, I'm here, I want to thank everybody who came out to that public meeting last week about the development. I want to thank everybody who came out, not for an opinion either way, but I want to thank everybody for showing up. As one of the co-chairs of the NRS, we worked extremely hard to get feedback from citizens, and the citizens have stepped up and they've started to come to public comment, they've started coming to public meetings, and I hope that as they're coming, that we're respecting those decisions. But, citizens, I want to speak to you guys as well. As there's discussion going on and things are going on, we need to make sure that we're showing the respect to each other and to the city council people to make sure that those decisions are fair. And as we're stepping into public meetings, and those of us who haven't been to as many public meetings as others, we need to make sure that we're not yelling out, that we're not trying to intimidate, that we're not bullying, we're making sure that everybody's heard and that people that need to make decisions can make those decisions without fear of repaisal. So, thank you, city council, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Please, no applause or cheers, we'll just have a more calm or easier meeting. Thank you. Our next speaker is John Bakken, and Ihor Figlis is on deck.
Hello, my name is John Bakken, B-A-K-K-E-N. I live at 10265 West 33rd Avenue. My wife and I chose to move to this neighborhood in Wheat Ridge from Denver 24 years ago to raise our kids and enjoy our lives in quiet, open, safe, and a comfortable atmosphere of this location. Now that our kids are grown and gone and we're retired, we choose to stay in the neighborhood for the exact same reasons, and we've watched as new young families move into the neighborhood from other metro locations, looking for those same qualities that we enjoy and who, in fact, have paid premium prices to live there. That's why I'm speaking tonight in opposition to the potential rezoning development of the 60-townhome project on 32nd. I attended the developers' meeting on August 20th and was dismayed by the response of the developer, HRE Holdings, to the many questions asked. Specific concerns were raised regarding safety, traffic, drainage, and environmental, and of course, the biggest issue, the overall impact of a high-density, multi-story complex in our existing single-family neighborhood. While HRE high-density projects look to be appropriate for downtown Denver or even for Wheat Ridge at Hans Ranch adjacent to the rail station, they have no place forced in the middle of a neighborhood of single-family homes. The Wheat Ridge definition of R1 zoning is, quote, "to provide high-quality, safe, quiet, and stable low-density residential neighborhoods and to prohibit activities of any nature which are incompatible with the low-density residential character," unquote. This is exactly what we are asking you to maintain. So tonight, I have three requests when the city council considers its development. First, respect the wisdom of your predecessors in their determination that the current neighborhood should maintain R1 zoning and the single-family character that R1 mandates. Any developer must respect the norms of the existing neighborhood. Second, respect the wishes of your constituents, the Wheat Ridge citizens who choose to live in this neighborhood and other single-family R1 neighborhoods for their existing character and who want to maintain that same quality of life. And third, respect your own common sense. Look at the projects that HRE has developed and ask yourselves if they belong in the middle of single-family homes. Would you want one of these developments overlooking your house? I think the answer is obvious. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Ihor Figlis, and Rachel Holtean on deck.
Good evening. My name is Ihor Figlis. I live at 9775 West 36th Avenue. I would like to take this opportunity to announce that I am a candidate to represent District 3 at the Wheat Ridge City Council. We are blessed to live in a beautiful city and deserve a high-quality election process. Being on city council means representing the voice of citizens in the operation of their government, and I ask everyone for their participation and support in this process. I will run a campaign based on ideas and policies, and I look forward to debates on issues and quality of representation. I pledge that I will not make or condone any personal attacks on other candidates, their family members, or issue proponents. I invite all other candidates for public office to make this pledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Rachel Holtean and Smirna Quinones on deck.
Good evening, council. My name is Rachel Holtean, and I live at 4690 Balsam Street. And much like you guys are packing in the agenda tonight, I'm going to pack in some comments on citizens' right. First and foremost, I want to, I was watching a meeting, I think from June, and it was the discussion about the barn and the historic preservation, and when I was watching that, I was just really, I think I knew this, but I was just reminded that we don't have any inventory or designation that helps us identify what it is we want to save in our city. And as we have these ongoing discussions about new investments and ideas that people within our city have and people who want to bring their ideas to Wheat Ridge, I think we need a lot more clarity about what it is we value and what we need to preserve so that we're not making it up every time we have a new idea on a corner. So I would like the city to consider whatever process seems right to include a layer in the GIS that designates certain structures for historic preservation, and I realize that's a big process, but I think if we don't get that started now, we are going to have to do this ad hoc, decision by decision, moving forward. My second topic, much like Corey, I care a lot about civility. We cannot have civics without civility. And in my, as long as I've lived in Wheat Ridge, there have been times where I haven't felt safe voicing my opinion. I've been personally attacked, I've been threatened on our Facebook groups, and it's really hard to keep showing up when you don't feel safe. And one thing about Wheat Ridge is everybody's in the minority here. There's no majority of any demographic or viewpoint, it's always a spectrum. So I just ask that council and citizens and anyone who wants to engage in civic dialogue, bring civility at the forefront so that all voices can be heard. I am running for council as well and did some campaigning this weekend, and I had more than one person express concern that they felt like they couldn't be heard because there were such dominant voices in the community. So bring civility first. To that end, I am working with Conflict Center to host a community and conversation workshop on October 8th. It's a Tuesday from 6:30 to 8:30. I'm going to be inviting all of the candidates running for public office to help co-host that, and it's a dialogue about how we, as a community, can talk about topics that we don't always agree on but can have civic discussion about. And then, sort of leading into that, the last thing, I'm really aware, I'm lucky that I can make a lot of Monday nights, but a lot of people can't. I would ask the city to look at a program like Lakewood has called Lakewood Listens, which allows citizens to provide input on agenda items and even public hearings online at their convenience so that working families, seniors with disabilities, and people who have a hard time making the specific time can still have their voice be heard as part of the public process. So thank you always for your service, and I look forward to civility moving forward. Thank you.
Pardon me, thank you. Our next speaker is Smirma Quinones and Megan Schleicher on deck.
Hi, I'm Smirma, last name's Quinones, and I live at 10270 West 33rd Avenue. And I am here, like many voices you've heard earlier today, in response to the application or proposed application for the rezoning of the property on 32nd and Kipling. And I just want to express things from a personal perspective outside of the traffic that you've heard from all other constituents. We have, the challenge we have is that some of us have really invested all of our money into a property knowing that the lot behind it is residential one. And so, part of the research that we did as we moved into the area was, okay, do we have the space that we want? Do we have the space that we need? Is the house retrofitted for the area? And there are many homes within the 100 yards, that's the requirement, or 100 feet, that have been retrofitted to work with the current conditions when it comes to the water tables and the flooding and everything that's associated with that wetland. And so, considering changing that zoning and adding that many homes to the area will definitely affect how the drainage will affect our structures, our foundations, and just the neighbors that I know, only, you know, five, six of them that are right by my house, there's over hundreds of thousands of dollars that have been invested in retrofitting those homes. So that's just something for you to consider. In addition to this, I want you to understand that as we considered purchasing this home, it was very important that we had the space and we weren't in a high-density area. I'm married to active-duty military, and as we look into retiring in this home, it's one thing that we really needed and that was super-duper important, making sure that we had the space as my husband goes into the civilian world, making sure that he had the space and making sure that he felt safe and was comfortable and didn't have all the additional sounds of vehicles or additional noise. And that's something that, in addition to the traffic that we're seeing, a lot more traffic going through our street and on Miller because people are taking it as a side street to avoid traffic, is something I want for you to consider as you look into the application for this rezoning. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Megan Schleicher and Joshua Myers on deck.
Good evening. Megan Schleicher, S-C-H-L-E-I-C-H-E-R. I live at 10315 West 33rd Avenue, and I am here to also speak about the proposed rezoning at the corner of 32nd and Kipling. The three zoning criteria that were presented to us to request a rezoning application, none of those criteria are met with the current proposal that we have seen, which the developer at the neighborhood meeting made very clear that it was just something to send out, get us all worried, get us all worked up, cause a lot of stress for all of the nearby residents. Their comment was that nothing's in stone, we just need your feedback, but we proposed the 60 units, and with PRD, as far as I understand, there's not much of a limit in terms of what could be put in there if it does get rezoned. So, we already know that the corner of 32nd and Kipling, the hill axis doesn't help this, but it is a very treacherous intersection. I've been in my vehicle or a person, a pedestrian, standing there, trying to make use of my local amenities with my two young children, five and two years old currently, trying to make use of the local parks, whether it be Crown Hill or Discovery. Kipling is a very threatening place. It's not safe. Even crossing 32nd to go over to Paramount, not really accessible to us. So while there are some great amenities locally, there isn't infrastructure currently set for the residents that live there. So, we like our quiet neighborhood, but man, it's tough to live where we live because we don't have what some other residents in the nearby area have because of their location and the streets that they have available to access these amenities. So we know the infrastructure's not available, we know that increased population won't be helping the traffic safety or the pedestrian safety, and then we also know that this growth has been expected. Whether it be E470, whether it be the light rail plans that have been in place for decades and been worked on for a long time, all of this has been expected. And so, the Wheat Ridge Planning Division has been working on a proposed plan, and R1 was the zoning that was given to this corner. Let me tell you, R1 even makes me nervous. The idea that almost seven acres could be put into 20 houses and the entrance or exit from that small area, it's a triangle, it's a weird shape, it just doesn't work very well, and having 20 to 40, even more, additional cars entering and exiting that location means more traffic on our little neighborhood roads. So, I'm out this past weekend trying to help my daughter learn to bike ride without training wheels, and the whole time I'm thinking, what's going to happen when cars are racing through here to bypass the intersection at 32nd and Kipling? So I really hope we think about improved infrastructure for the current residents, let alone thinking about rezoning this intersection and putting in a new development. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joshua Meyer, I believe, and Jenny Shaver on deck.
Evening, council. I'll be brief. My name is Joshua Meyer. For the record, I'm a resident of Wheat Ridge. I live at 8835 West 32nd Avenue, and I'd like to grant my time to my wife, Jenny Shaver.
So our next speaker is Jenny Shaver and Jennifer Yates on deck.
Good evening. My name is Jenny Shaver, S-H-A-V-E-R. I live at 8835 West 32nd Avenue here in Wheat Ridge. I have a couple of points I wanted to speak on this evening. The first talking point, as many people have come tonight, is about 32nd and Kipling. As I said, I do live on 32nd Avenue, and I did attend the public meeting the other night, and there were about a couple hundred people here, and vastly, everybody kind of agreed that I could see that they did not want this. I ask, as elected officials, your role is to listen to constituents, both in your district as well as the city as a whole. So as people bring these items forward, I'd hope that you would listen to all of them, what they have to say, what their desires are. People, from what I'm hearing, do not want the high-density housing in this location. I'm not understanding what's wrong with maybe single-family homes. I know down 32nd and kind of behind where the Applewood Baptist Church is across that north side, single-family homes are put in there, they're gorgeous. They don't have to be that big necessarily in that area, but I just don't know why that couldn't be an option versus the high-density townhomes. There are other areas to me that seem more prime to develop high-density housing, maybe the I-70 and Kipling corridor, things of that nature. I think of more down on I-25 and Lincoln, there's awesome apartments that have the full in-home gym or the gym locations with the pools. We could bring the families here and have that location right there by their Vado Ridge Marketplace, bring them to our neighborhoods, but just maybe not in our backyards. Living on 32nd Avenue, the traffic is horrendous, both for speed and volume, between the high school as well as the hospital. I have a hard time getting out of my house to go to work in the morning. I've had to leave 45 minutes early some days to try to just get traffic to beat them so I can get out to go to my work. So I'm only envisioning, like everybody's saying for their neighborhoods, that much more traffic on 32nd. It's a challenge. We've got kids on bikes, we have residents on bikes, 32nd's that massive bike path. I'm worried someone's going to get hurt. There's already been accidents and fatalities. I'm worried there'll be more. So I'm asking that you would just please not add to this volume and consider that. My second talking point is more related to rezoning on the property on Uppam. I kind of wanted to clear the air on a few things, as it came to my attention that my name, in addition to my mother's name, has been pretty much drug through the mud. Yes, for the record, my mom is Janelle Shaver, the clerk. However, she doesn't come home and call me and talk about her work, and I don't call her and tell her about all the details of my work. So to me, it's sort of a relevant thing. I've always been supportive of her role in the city government. But I basically became involved in this project when I was approached by someone to help with the petition. I found out that Mr. and Mrs. McLeod hired a law firm to challenge the petitions that were being signed by citizens, and I actually offered to help when I was asked about that. I was told kind of what had happened, how the council reviewed things, changed their mind. I wanted the citizens to have a right to say what they felt, so I offered to carry a petition. In doing so, found out that they had contested this whole thing, have a hearing. Apparently, my name was listed on a subpoena list to be subpoenaed to come here and testify at a hearing. I was never subpoenaed. No one ever served me a subpoena. I never signed for a subpoena, never got one. However, it was still put out there on the record that I had not showed up for a subpoena. So I was pretty upset when I heard about that. I don't understand why anybody even called me that day here. Someone could have called me at work and said, hey, we want to clear the air, did you get a subpoena? You didn't come in. No one even reached out to me. Yet to bring, you know, my name into it is, like I avoided something, was kind of truly, I don't know, kind of pathetic and want to answer, but then, at the same time, I couldn't believe what I was hearing, kind of to insinuate that I ignored a subpoena is insulting, and frankly, people have talked about how we're treating each other, but it was a way of bullying and that my name has now been put out there, that I have avoided something, that I was just happy to be involved as a citizen, to get involved and give our citizens a voice. So I wasn't really happy about that, and as a native, I am a Wheat Ridge native, there's very few of us probably around still, but I am one, and I like to be involved in my community. But it sort of gives you a bad feeling when you feel like you're being kind of sabotaged or talked poorly about when you're truly just trying to represent your neighbors and give them a voice. It just didn't set well with me, and that's why I really wanted to speak about that tonight. I don't want this to discourage other citizens from getting involved in the local government, but it's sort of clear to me, like if the council doesn't vote with or for the citizens, then we, the citizens, become the target of the developer. And that's the case that's happening here with me personally, so I wanted to just clear that out there, that whatever happens with this case, I want you to know that truly there was no subpoena given to me. If I had got one, I would have come, because I kind of go by the law, but that didn't happen. So as we move forward in these development processes, I just ask you, listen to your citizens. They elected you. They wanted you to be here to be the representative, so please take that into consideration, and I get it's not against development. I'm excited where the city Wheat Ridge is going. I love some of the projects we have in place, but we want to also be smart about what we develop. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Jennifer Yates and Daniel Bryce on deck.
Good evening, city council. My name is Jennifer Yates. I live at 3700 Miller Street. First of all, I'd like to agree that the property at 32nd and Kipling, I would hope that it would remain R1 as that does match the surrounding community. But this is the real reason that I'm here tonight. This is a Juul vaping device. This is so popular with our youth that it has its own verb. It's called Juuling. I could use it right here, and there'd be no outward signs of it, there's no vapor cloud, there's no smell, and this is being used in and around our schools all day, every day. While I appreciate the fact that many think vaping is just water vapor, it is not. Honestly, that's probably one of the biggest hurdles when it comes to protecting our youth from the industry. First and foremost, 99% of vaping products contain nicotine, which is highly addictive, and it ensures the vaping industry- highly addictive, and it ensures the vaping industry future customers. The American Heart Association says that nicotine consumed from smoking is one of the hardest substances to quit and is considered to be at least as hard as quitting heroin. While nicotine itself does not cause cancer, some of the other substances in the liquid nicotine may well contribute to it. For example, a flavoring used in some E-liquids is also associated with severe respiratory problems, seen in workers at factories that produce microwavable popcorn, known as popcorn lung. Now, young people are ending up in the hospital, and at least one dead, possibly from vaping. And while there are those that will say there's no proof that vaping is causing this, thanks to the lackluster efforts of the FDA, there's, they can't prove that it isn't. Ninety percent of underage users are supplied by their eighteen-to-twenty-year-old peers, and I hope as a community, we can ensure the safety of our youth by licensing retailers and raising the legal minimum age to purchase to twenty-one. As a mother of three high school students, I'm not willing to risk my children's lives on the remote possibility that this won't hurt them long-term. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Daniel Bryce.
Hello, I'm Daniel Bryce, D.A.N.I.E.L.B.R.Y.C.E., one-zero-two-five-zero, West Thirty-third Circle, or Avenue, sorry. Two things, I'd like the council to consider, the possibility, due to traffic concerns, especially of turning the property at Thirty Second and Kipling into either park, open space, or perhaps a conservation easement. The second thing I want to talk about is, it's more of a question on my part as to process. I'd like to call your attention to page ninety-six of the agenda tonight, item number five, Council Bill Number One-three-two-zero-one-nine. If you look at the prior action, it shows that the Planning Commission voted, the failed, I should say, the motion for approval failed by a vote of one to six. And yet, if you look at page ninety-seven, the very next page under recommendations, it says staff recommends approval of the ordinance. And this doesn't make sense to me. I don't know who this staff is, I don't know why they're recommending opposite of what the Planning Commission voted on, and it seems to me that if the, the staff can contradict, command the, the vote of the Planning Commission, what's the point of the Planning Commission? What's the point of the meetings or having citizen input? Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the speakers that I have signed up to speak on public comment, but if you didn't get signed up, it's, it's not too late. If someone would like to speak, please come to the podium and give us your first name and your last name, and the address, and we'll go from there.
Hello, my name is Brandy Zamudio, Z.A.M.U.D.I.O. My family lives at four-seven-two-five Otis, Wheat Ridge, Colorado, eight-zero-zero-three-three. First of all, I came here tonight not anticipating getting up here and talking, however, as I see things progress, I see and hear the passion of our citizens of Wheat Ridge. Everybody's very busy nowadays, and everybody that participates in things like this cuts out time of their schedule to come here, whether that be away from their family, away from their friends, away from their work, and they're passionate enough to get up here and speak, to show themselves that they care about what happens to their city. Thank you for everything that you guys do as City Council, but my ask is, is that you listen to what they are saying. You actively listen to what they are saying. As leaders in the community, part of being a leader is listening to others and learning, or at least, you know, getting a different point of view, having the conversation. And so, I know you have a very hard job. Every decision is tough, there's a lot of factors that go into it that maybe I don't see as a, you know, as a regular citizen. So, I just wanted to ask you guys to really, really listen to the passion of the community, listen to what they're saying and why they're saying that. Thank you.
Thank you. Another speaker that would like to speak, Ms. Archer, please come forward.
Dorothy Archer, thirty-six forty Marshall Street. Good evening, Mars Darker, Council, Staff, and Citizens. My heart goes out to you on Thirty Second and Kipling, but I also want to say something to you, a fight that we have had on East Wheat Ridge for over two years. If your zoning remains Zone One, this contractor can go up thirty-five feet with a flat roof. Depending on the size of your lots, will depend on how much space there is between each one of these dwellings. If he changes to an R3, you actually have thirty-five feet with a fifteen-foot bulk plane, which is a slope on each side with maybe a half a story in the middle. The reason that was changed is over two years ago, in the southeast corner of Wheat Ridge, a thirty-five-foot flat-roofed home was built right next to small bungalows. It raised alarm. With much work for Mike Epson, who lives in that area, and petitions, council did address that situation and changed the thirty-five feet to thirty-five feet with a fifteen-foot bulk plane. I myself have fought for over two years to have every residential zone have thirty-five feet abolished, thirty-five feet with a fifteen-foot bulk plane at least. Now, perhaps we have some support from West Wheat Ridge. We're with you. We are with you. We are not against development. We are not against development at all. But please, Council, keep in consideration of being respectful of those of us who live here. No changing of residential zones to PRDs. Thank you.
Thank you. We have another speaker who would like to come forward, please come forward.
Good evening, my name's Becky Zachmeyer, that's Z.A.C.H.M.E.I.E.R. I live at forty-two-hundred Upham Street in Wheat Ridge. I've been reading through the NRC survey that was conducted in 2018 by the city. It reported that the survey for households was sent out to four thousand five hundred families, and then the return rate, it stated, was twenty-six percent at one thousand one hundred and thirty-six returns. That concerns me, however, because there's thirty-three thousand residents in Wheat Ridge, and so, in reality, that's really only asking three-point-four percent of the population for their opinions. I know that you can do sample sizing, and there's differences in how surveys are designed, but I'm questioning why such a small survey size was chosen, and I'm wondering about the rest of our voices. My concern is that if City Council or City Management is moving forward based on one survey of less than four percent of the population, then is that why decisions are being made without the general knowledge of the population of Wheat Ridge? Or was that just a sample to get ready for a larger survey that actually asks the opinions of the majority of people who live here? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't spoken in a public comment and hasn't signed up that would like to come up and speak? Microphone is open? Can I see anyone else?
Point of privilege.
One, one moment, I, I still have another speaker.
I'm Nicole Megank, M.E.G.A.N.K. I live at sixty Hillside Drive, directly across the street from the proposed development at Thirty Second and Kipling. I wasn't planning on speaking, I just wanted to come up as part of the younger crowd that has not really been represented quite as much, and I've heard some kind of, I don't know, comments about that, that we aren't really showing up. Having kids, back-to-school time, all work, just everything, it's hard to show up. I was fifteen minutes late myself, so my apologies. But, you know, I own two small businesses in Wheat Ridge. I love Wheat Ridge, love the community. I've been here for only three years, but I was in the Highlands neighborhood, Lower Highlands, for ten years prior. Things were getting so dense so quickly, and we loved it when we first moved in, and, you know, some gentrification is good, but that got to be a little too much for us. We wanted this space, and I know that, you know, I'm not anti-development by any means, but we wanted the safe place for kids to ride bikes and walk to school and all of that, and I just feel like all of the density right on that corner, again, not to be, you know, beating a dead horse here, but I just wanted a voice that my neighbors, my family, and the, the businesses that I own, that they both support, young families in the neighborhood, we're all just kind of, like, just urging you to please reconsider any zone change. Thank you.
Thank you. It's still not too late. If anyone hasn't, wants to come and speak, there's still an opportunity. Okay, going once, going twice, we will close our public comment.
Point of privilege. I would like-
Ms. Gosment, Ms. Gosment, please have a point of public privilege.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to address some of the comments that were made by speakers tonight, and I'm going to preface this with the quote that is in our lobby at City Hall. "People create the quality of their government through participation or neglect." I love that we have a more participatory community, and something that I love the most about Wheat Ridge is how impassioned we are and how we show up and have our voices heard, and that is something that I very much respect in this community. And some, some of the things that have been brought up tonight have been surrounding respect and civility. Last weekend, or last Monday after study session, I was verbally attacked by a constituent, and it necessitated the, an officer following me out and ensuring that I got to my car. And if we are, we all realize that being on this dais, we have to have thick skin, and we have to be making difficult decisions and having tough conversations, and in order for us to be able to do that, we need to be able to say and bring up things that others may disagree with and not like, but that doesn't mean that we can verbally or physically attack anyone. And so, I just want to really elevate the conversation in this community, and I want to thank all of you for coming and speaking and participating in your government, and, 'cause this really is, you did elect us, and we are here to represent you, and if you would like to call me, email me, I, you know, I love talking to constituents, but I, I expect respect, and I, and I know that you expect respect from me as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we will move on to our business agenda, and item number one, consent agenda. Mr. Keeter, would you please introduce Agenda Item Number One-B and One-C, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item Number One-B, motion to award the purchase of and subsequent payment for twenty-five mobile data computer replacements in the amount of eighty thousand one hundred dollars to PCN strategies in Washington, DC for the annual scheduled mobile, mobile data computer replacement. And item Number One-C, motion to approve payment to Insight Public Sector in the amount of seventy-seven thousand dollars, four hundred and eighty-five dollars and forty cents for the annual renewal of the Microsoft Enterprise Agreement.
Thank you. Will you please provide a motion for Agenda Items One-B and One-C?
I move that we approve Consent Agenda Items Number One-B and One-C.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Would the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Mr. Keeter, will you please introduce Agenda Item Number One-A?
Thank you. Item Number One-A, Resolution Number Forty-four dash two thousand nineteen, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, providing for an annual contribution in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars through two thousand twenty-four. At issue is an intergovernmental agreement entered into in between the City and Renewal Wheat Ridge in order to establish the rights and responsibilities of the City and Renewal Wheat Ridge with respect to, one, operational assistance, and, two, funding for urban renewal activities expires on December thirty-first, two thousand nineteen. Renewal Wheat Ridge is requesting that City Council extend the IGA for a five-year term through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four.
Thank you. May I have a motion, please, on Agenda Item Number One-A?
I move to approve Resolution Number Forty-four dash two thousand nineteen, a resolution approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wheat Ridge and the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority, providing for an annual contribution in the amount of three hundred thousand dollars through two, two thousand twenty-four.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion on the motion? Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I know we went over this a little bit at study session, and then I kind of reviewed the actual finished document and what was going on here. I do have a question. This doesn't address exactly from what sources, and I would like some discussion on where that three hundred thousand dollars is coming from, and is it, how, is it retroactive or just going forward from, is it changing any past agreements that have already expired? How, how does that process really work? Where do the funds come from?
I'll answer that, that question first. The funds come from the General Fund, so, the General Fund. City's General Fund. So, so, all the revenues that come into the General Fund, which are many, primarily sales tax, it's, it's, it's a payment from the General Fund and a check sent to the Urban Renewal Authority.
So, in the past, where they've gotten funds from specific projects, that no longer applies?
No, they still get funds from specific projects also.
They get additional money other than this?
They, they do. If, if there's increment being generated in, in certain urban renewal areas, they are getting some property tax increment. I don't know those exact numbers. This money was always, at least in, in the past, given to the Urban Renewal Authority for their operational expenses. They have, they have, the Urban Renewal Authority as a board has their own legal counsel, so it pays for any legal fees for their attorney, and then any operational, operation, operating expenses that they may have throughout the year. The incremental, the prop tax incremental revenues that come in are, are used on special projects, and they have examples, and I know Ms. Davis is on the Urban Renewal Authority, she, she could probably speak to some examples, but the Urban Renewal Authority has paid for lighting on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, a traffic signal at Thirty Second Xenon, a, a few other projects too. So, those funds are spent on actual projects. The three hundred thousand is for operational expenses.
Okay, thank you. I would like, I'll give anyone else a chance to speak first, and I'd like to summarize.
Ms. Davis?
I, I'd also like to just comment on your, where you had mentioned other revenues, and the authority does get the other, other revenues as well, but it goes back to paying the expenses that they've done. So, for instance, Sprouts will get that increment financing from them, but then we also have to pay the, the loans back that, that we need to from, from that increment. So, it's not just like we're getting other revenues in and stockpiling it. Most of our other revenues are basically, and you'll see it when, in the budget reports, that it kind of goes in and goes back out because it goes to pay for the projects. Just like in Wheat Ridge Cyclory, the other thing that we've been doing is oftentimes we work to pay it off quicker so that we have less, less obligation from an interest perspective. So, like, for instance, Wheat Ridge Cyclory was paid off earlier where we could've just paid a certain portion, had that portion go to something else. We've always paid things off quicker, so, so, although it sounds like we have other revenues, we also have the expenses that have paid for some of these urban renewal development areas.
In the past, I recall, and I believe you, and Wheat Ridge Cyclory was one example of this, but if something was paid off in seven years, you were given permission to keep getting your increment for the full term of the twenty or whatever years that it went forward.
Actually, we gave that back to the city.
Any of the other projects that you've been keeping that after you've paid off?
I think most of them, from a sales tax perspective, we've written it that when the sales tax is done, that we're, we don't collect anymore. Is that right, Mr. Carr?
Correct, the, yeah, the sales tax comes back to-
How about the property tax ones?
Property tax can, stays with the Urban Renewal Authority. You're correct.
So, that's what I'm saying, after they pay that off, then they keep getting extra in, income?
For the, for the twenty-five years, that's allowed by state statute, yep.
Okay, well, I was against this at, at study session because I don't believe in giving people budgets out five years when we have no projected need or whatever, but that was my point, and I wished to make sure that people understood how the process works a little better.
Thank you. Do we have additional discussion on the motion? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for the city manager with the, the operational assistance aspect of this, is the funding for the operational assistance separate from the three hundred thousand? this, is the funding for the operational assistance separate from the 300,000 and in addition to the 300,000, or does the $300,000 cover the operational assistance costs of the employees and salaries of those individuals?
We don't charge the employees' salaries to the urban authority. It's, the general fund still pays for, Steve Arts, our economic development manager, pays for those, but it does, again, it pays for all the attorney fees and any other operational expenses they may have, such right now they're paying to, for a cleanup of the site at 38th and Yukon. That was a contaminated site that the urban authority purchased several years ago for the, the, the Corners project, so they're, they're still paying for the cleanup of that. Any other fees, any other expenses that the urban authority has? Mr. Arts here, if he, he can speak to it, too, if I'm missing anything?
We have many of them. The new, the sanitation line on Uppam Street, the improvements from, from 44th from Uppam down to Wadsworth for those sanitation improvements, next year we'll be paying those bills off. We have consultants. We have been working with the county assessor for the last year and a half on trying to figure out exactly how tax base and increment are calculated, so we have a consultant on board helping with that. Mr. Matthews, to your question, Wheat Ridge Recycleri is currently the only obligation that we have, that we have relieved that obligation that we have to them, so all the other ones are ongoing. Perrin's Row is our first one, we're still paying off that one.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
I had a question for Steve Art regarding the urban authority and whether or not the funds that are derived from this contract are those used as a source of income for any outstanding debt or loans by the urban authority?
No, they are not, unless you would consider the 38th and Yukon Court that Mr. Goff referenced, the cleanup of that. We do have contracts on that and not an obligation to clean that up for the citizens of our city, so that we can have a clean site. But no, no tiffs are being paid from that.
Necessarily tiffs, but I think it was in 2006 or 2007 when this agreement was initially authorized, there was some indication of a first bank loan that was being taken out, and this contract provided a source of income for that loan.
And that was prior to me starting, but from what I understand, and maybe Mr. Goff can assist with that also, that was to do the Town Center North where the two new apartments and the third Ridge House will be built. The urban authority did purchase those lands from private property owners, remediated that. Again, there was contamination on the site, not only asbestos and lead-based paint, but there was underground contaminations. The urban authority used those funds to remediate that site and then also put all that infrastructure in the ground to allow for the creation of 133 new affordable units for seniors in the community.
Thank you. And then, I don't know if the appropriate question is to either the city attorney or to yourself, but under Part C, salaries and procedures, item number two, it doesn't appear to be much different from item number one, and so I'm curious as to why both items number one and two under Section C, salaries and procedures, is listed. The first one says salaries of the executive director of the authority shall be established by the Board of Commissioners of the authority, and then the second one says salaries and fees of all other employees and consultants, experts established by the Board of Commissioners of the authority, provided, and it goes on from there, but it's all the same, so I'm not sure what the...
I believe the, the first one deals with if, if it wasn't me and the, and we were a separate board that hired their own executive director, that that salary would be set by the board. Section, of Section C, number two, would speak more of consultants, other employees that may be hired, maybe there would be a staff that would be hired by this, this execu, new executive director, so it would speak to that.
Right, but then it just goes on to say that in the event, on the second one, it says the, in the event the executive director is hired by the authority is also a city employee, the authority agrees that his or her total salary, and it just goes on about the executive director in the second category. So, it just, to me, I don't understand why.
These are actually labeled number one and number two and number two, so maybe this was an either/or and the, and the drafter didn't pick, you know, didn't, didn't get one of them deleted.
Well, either one, I mean, so, items one, two, and two.
Yes.
All three of them, there should just be one. And so I don't understand, if there is to be two, why is there two?
Maybe, Mr. Goff, can you bring any clarity to this issue?
I'm thinking, just looking at this firsthand, but I'm thinking that, that probably the, the fix is to take the, the last sentence of, on the page, any authority employed may be included benefit programs, add that to number two, and then get rid of the second number two, and then you've probably done it. That takes care of the, twice saying all other employees, which I agree with, Council Member Urban doesn't make a lot of sense. The last sentence there, I think, is, is not found elsewhere on the benefit programs. So, if you move that up to that second paragraph and get rid of what's not needed in the third paragraph, then you'd be there, and I...
What about the, the part in the second paragraph that talks about the executive director? I don't understand why that's in there.
As compared with paragraph one?
Right.
Looks like that's another duplication to me. I mean, I'm reading this for the first, first time, but it, it would seem to me that maybe what you do, and I'd be happy to, to talk with the attorney for the authority on the other side, but you just want to eliminate any duplication under, in, in these three paragraphs.
Correct. I'm not concerned about the content necessarily, it's more the...
I, I think that's, that's a good suggestion. In fact, I'd, I'd ask for it, so when this motion to approve has already been made, if the direction could be to eliminate the duplicative language in sub-paragraph C, then I can make certain that happens.
Couldn't that amendment be made as a friendly amendment to the maker of the motion? Or do we need to vote on that?
Let's see. Let me go back to, Mr. Keeter, you, would you accept this as a friendly amendment?
Yes.
It will, and the seconder, will you accept that as a friendly second?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so, we're good with an amendment. Do we have the, the appropriate language for that amendment?
My suggestion would be the amendment commands me to eliminate duplicate language, and I can do that.
Okay. Very good.
And, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
And, Mr. Goff, you will get that language?
I will, absolutely.
Thank you.
And I would just like to speak on this.
Okay, so, you may speak now on the substance.
Thank you. So, when this agreement was initially signed back in 2006, we had a source of money, we had the operational assistance, the employee salaries and benefits paid for out of the money that was agreed to, and then the, the third thing is, is that it was a supplemental budget appropriation when the agreement was signed. And so, as we look at it now, we have an agreement that doesn't include the salaries and benefits, that's an additional cost. You have a situation where this isn't a budget appropriation, this is just in a resolution agreeing to five years of funds, which I, not necessarily saying funding the urban authority isn't appropriate, what I am concerned about is a five-year agreement and the necessity of having any kind of five-year agreement, whereas we could go to an annual appropriation, which I think is appropriate, given a, an annual budget appropriation process. So, I will not be voting for this, and it's not to say that I don't appreciate the hard work that the urban authority has done, it's that this agreement started off with us identifying where we were going to pay for it, we were identifying the, the costs involved in it and paying, and paying for the costs in the agreement, and now that's completely flipped. So, I don't think this is a good agreement for the city, and I would encourage other council members to vote no as well.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion? And I had a question and clarity for, for Mr. Goff, if you've got a second. Mr. Urban, this, this does not create a multi-year financial obligation with respect to this, Mr. Goff?
It does not.
Okay.
Because the 300,000 would be budgeted annually and it would come...
We need to re, renew that annually, so...
Correct. Plus, you can't, it's not legal.
Paragraph seven actually addresses that. In the agreement, paragraph seven actually addresses, says, this is subject to annual appropriation.
And I, I see the language in there, and that's very clear, it's just a matter of understanding that it's sort of a wink and a nod to say, we're not going to appropriate this for five years, we, just because we throw that in there, so that's a concern for me.
Certainly. Any further discussion on the motion? Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries six to two, with Council Members Matthews and Urban voting no.
Thank you. We will move to item number two. Mr. Matthews, would you please introduce item number two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number two is Resolution 45-2019, a resolution approving a service plan and intergovernmental agreement for the Hans Ranch Metropolitan District. At issue is, the City Council has asked to approve the service plan and intergovernmental agreement for the Hans Ranch Metropolitan District, a taxing district to be used to finance certain improvements for the residential development. Service plan approval is the means by which the city oversees the creation of such districts, which are ultimately approved for formation by the district court.
Thank you. This is, this is a public hearing and a resolution, it is not quasi-judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And, Mr. Goff, do we have a staff presentation on this?
We do. The, the attorney representing the developer, Megan, is here this evening, you've met before, to do a quick presentation.
Megan Murphy, White Bear Ankle, Tanaka and Waldron. Can you guys see this? Oh, okay, great. Hi, you might remember me from the neighbor to the west, Ward TOD, just across the way from Hans.
I get emails from you, don't I?
You do.
Okay.
Sorry about that. Yeah. So, this presentation is substantively the same, the service plan is substantively the same, but I'll go through it, happy to stop for questions, don't want to waste your time since you just saw me maybe two months ago. So, nice to see you guys again. So, this is the vicinity map of the project, it's the hashtag, hashline area, it's not at 32nd and Kipling, for the record, not even close to 32nd and Kipling, very far away from 32nd and Kipling. Okay, great. This is a townhome project, I think, I believe 63 townhomes. You've already approved the plat for this, you've already approved the SIA for this, we're coming to you with the service plan for the same project you've already seen. Here's some nice images of what it may, may, may look like, I just want to clarify, no promises about the colors. So, these are some of the same slides we talked about before, what's a metro district, how is it governed, public disclosure, and I'm happy to go through those again if that's council's pleasure, or just hit specific questions, talk generally about the service plan, what would be helpful to you guys?
Let's talk in general and, and hit, hit the highlights.
Okay. Great. So, this service plan is coming to you as a brand-new service plan, unlike Ward TOD, which was an amendment to an existing project, this is brand-new. The debt limit proposed is $6 million, it's got the same 60 mils for debt that you saw with Ward TOD, and the other projects escaping me that you approved last fall, Yarrow Gardens also have the same mill levy structure. It's Gallagherized from January 1, 2018, it's a 40-year debt term, the projected cost for this project is 1.8 million in public improvements, but let's get to the fun slide about what else you guys get for approving this project tonight. Hang tight. So, this project had an SIA that required the developer and the city to work out a reimbursement, and we've changed the terms of that if the service plan is approved tonight. Sorry, you go ahead. You got, okay. So, under the SIA, the, the city would have paid up to $241,000 in reimbursement to the developer. If the service plan is approved tonight, that deal changes, where the city doesn't reimburse the developer at all for additional drainage improvements that the city requested off-site, and instead, the city pays or provides a credit of up to $84,000 for a Tabor Street pipe, which just, I mean, I'm not an accountant, but the numbers are a better deal for you with the service plan compared to the cost of reimbursement. But I'm happy to answer questions about this.
Okay, we're gonna, we're gonna hold off on questions of council...
Oh, okay.
Until you're done with your presentation. Are you...
I'm wrapped up, this is the last slide, yeah.
You're wrapped up? Okay. Before we go to questions of council, I have, I want to go to public comment, and I have two members of the public signed up to speak that I would like to invite to speak. First, our first speaker will be Megan Murphy and Matt Kavanaugh on deck.
Oh, I'm Megan.
Are you Megan Murphy? Okay, well, we're going to...
And Matt Kavanaugh is my client.
Matt Kavanaugh, would Mr. Kavanaugh like to speak tonight? Okay, thank you. Then, uh...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question of, Ms. Murphy, for the minutes, you, you did say it's 1.8 million in, in funds for improvements?
Yeah, I have a more detailed number.
But the, the slide says 243,1...
Oh, we're talking about two different sets of public improvements. So, the total public improvements for the project are approximately 1.8 million.
Okay.
This is a different pullout from that.
Okay, I just want to make it clear in the minutes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, then, yes, ma'am? Do you wish to speak?
Yeah.
Okay, please come to the microphone and give us your name.
I apologize for not signing in, I got here a little bit late. I was wanting to see the previous slide that shows...
Ma'am, ma'am?
My name is Terri Dahlbeck. And do you need something else?
Can you spell that last name for me?
D-A-L-B-E-C, first name, T-E-R-I.
And would you give us your address, please?
3810 Garrison Street.
Thank you. Please continue.
That's in Wheat Ridge. And I was liking to see the previous slide that shows what this metro district was gonna be doing. It had a list of street improvements or something, there was, can we go back on the slides or not?
Ms. Murphy, are you able to bring up a different slide if you, if you would?
Megan, why don't you come up if you would? Terri, could, could Megan behind you come up? She'll, she'll go to the slide.
I think we just need to hit, I think it's P for previous. The City Council finding slide? You tell them what.
Keep going to the one that says metro district, keep going to the one they, they're financing. Going back. Okay, that one, yeah.
Oh, sorry. Oh, right here. Okay, there you go.
So, this met, this is, I'm assuming a metro district, it's really kind of confusing for public, but I'm assuming this is a metro district that's for a PRD, and it's an overset on it, but my understanding is when they put in PRDs that the developer is responsible for a lot of these, and now it looks like trying to set another form of government on top of the other one and pay for all of this so that the developer, the people who are planning this are not having to pay for any of these things, and putting it on to the people who are going to live in these places as a tax that I think goes over the top of our city taxes, so now you're double taxing them for things that, if you look in the PRD section, it appears that streets and improvements and things like that are supposed to be done as part of the developer's job. So, I just wanted to point that out. I don't know if we're going to start putting all these metropolitan districts, I know some of the other cities have, and then they try to say that they don't have to, people come to buy them, they go, oh, you don't have a homeowners association, but you have this metropolitan district, which is a tax, it's on top of your house, if you can't afford it, you can get foreclosed on, and it causes a lot of problems. So, I'm definitely against this being approved for this site or for any of the sites in the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? I, I apologize for not asking for anyone else who would like to speak. You may come forward now.
Raleigh Sorrentino, S-O-R-R-E-N-T-I-N-O, 4175 Teller Street. I'm just here, some people are questioning, and I am, too, if this lady could please explain more specifically where this is, where Hans Ranch is, show us on the map where it is. I have a question along with some other people in the audience, so she could just explain the location of this and definition of Hans Ranch. I'd appreciate it.
Thank you. We will have Ms. Murphy, if you would please come to the microphone and explain where, where this is.
So, it might be a little bit hard to see on here, and I apologize for that, but this project is located at West 52nd Avenue and Tabor Street?
On the southwest corner?
Correct, sir.
Okay, so, the address, it's located on the southwest corner of 52nd Avenue and Tabor Street in Wheat Ridge. Is that, get it? Okay.
Does that help?
Okay. Is there anyone else in, in the room tonight who has not spoken who would like to come and speak on this? Okay, we will move now to questions from council. Ms. Davis?
I have just a question for you, it might be for the developer. I know that with, you're, you're right, we did some similar with the Yarrow Gardens, and one of the things they were sure to... the things they were sure to, to make sure of is that for any sales of the property, that a part of the, the sale in the agreement was that the purchaser was very aware of this metropolitan district. And so I just wanted to be clear that that is, again, something that we'll be clear with for the new home buyers so that it's completely transparent that that's a part of their role.
Yeah, thanks for asking. So that's included in Section 8 of the service plan, and I triple, triple check these section references.
Thank you.
As you might remember our fun we had last time. So not only is it included as part of the service plan, but it will be included in the sales contract between the builder and the home buyer. It's recorded on the property, so should you pull up a tax statement on the assessor's website or any other publicly available information, it will be there. We file documents with the district court. We file documents with the special district association, which can be found just by Googling. We're trying to get out there and tell you about metro districts. We're not trying to hide. So yes, it will be included in the sales contract and other publicly available documents.
Thank you. I just wanted that clarification.
Thank you for asking.
Thank you. Before I close the public hearing and we move to a motion, is there any other questions that council have of staff or the applicant? Then I'm going to close the public hearing, and Mr. Matthews, a motion is in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 45-2019, a resolution approving a service plan and intergovernmental agreement for the Hans Ranch Metropolitan District.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Urban. Is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
I'm pretty sure I cleared it. Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will move to agenda item number three. Ms. Dozeman, would you introduce agenda item number three?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution Number 46-2019, a resolution approving the assignment to the housing authority of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, DBA Metro West Housing Solutions of $1,667,715 of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado's 2019 private activity bond volume cap allocation from the state ceiling for private activity bonds and authorizing the execution and delivery of an assignment and other documents in connection therewith.
Thank you. This is a resolution. This is a public hearing. It is not quasi judicial. I'm going to open the public hearing. And do you have a staff presentation on this?
Yeah, just real briefly. We discussed this at study session, I believe, last, was it last Monday? So a lot of questions were there. I don't know if, is there anybody here from Jefferson? Oh, there is. Did you want to say anything also?
Yeah.
Yeah. While she's coming up, I'll, I'll just give a quick summary of this. So private activity bonds are tax exempt bonds that, as was read, is, it's a tax exempt program from the federal government, and the city gets an annual allocation capacity of bonding, and ours is one, about 1.7 million this year. We've never used it for a specific project in Wheat Ridge before, so we were very fortunate, I think, to have a partner in Jefferson County Housing Authority to come to us with a very great project so that we can, they can use these private activity bonds and to leverage other funding to make some much-needed improvements in a, in an affordable housing project here in Wheat Ridge. So with that, I will let Lori Rosendahl, the executive director of the Jefferson County Housing Authority, speak about the project.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for allowing us to speak on our project. We are looking-
Can you say your name, please?
Sure. Lori Rosendahl, Executive Director, Jefferson County Housing Authority. We are the housing authority for Jefferson County. We cover about 774 square miles, seven cities, six towns, you know, you know Jeffco. It's a big place. So we have been looking at our own portfolio. Not only are we developing new, new, new developments and new communities in Evergreen, Golden, we're also looking at our own portfolio for opportunities to improve our communities for our families. One of the first properties we looked at was 48th and Garrison's. These are square apartments, and knew that we wanted to do something there to improve the, improve the community for our families. This includes adding a community space, so they'll have a community room, includes taking a market property. This is a market property. This property has no subsidy attached to it. It has, we, we could charge market rents there. We, we're gonna bring in a, a tax credit financing deal that will restrict the rents but to 80% or below. I know it says 60 in our presentation, but I think we'll have a few, likely not many, but a few 80% units. But it will be a restricted income property with, by improving the project and adding a community room, improving the, the units and improving the space will make it safer. We actually worked with the Wheat Ridge Police Department regarding some of the access issues there, and you know, with, with its location close to I-70, oftentimes cars are left in the parking lot. It's got a huge parking lot, not much lighting. So all of those things we're going to address with this redevelopment, and we're asking for the private activity bonds to help us leverage the 4% credit and improve the project.
Thank you very much.
Lori, could you maybe also maybe speak to what 60% AMI means and what that is right now in Jefferson County?
You would ask me that.
I'm sorry, or roughly, I think roughly.
Let me see if I have them. I do have them.
In the trouble.
So this project is actually 37 one bedrooms, 69 twos and three two bedroom, two three bedrooms. The 60% AMI for one person is 39,000. For two, it's 44,580, and for three people, it's 50,160. So those are about the income ranges that we'll be serving there. With restricted rents at those levels, the rents will run from about $1,000 to 1,400, depending on AMI, bedroom size, all of those things.
Mountain views?
Pardon?
Mountain views.
Yes, of course.
Okay. Thank you very much. I don't have anyone signed up to speak on this item, but I don't want to be remiss in not inviting members of the public to come forward and speak on this, what I think is a really exciting project. But so is there anyone here who's not signed up who would like to come speak on this? You may do so now. Okay, I don't see anyone coming forward, but I would like to open the, the floor to members of council for, for any questions or comments. Mr. Keeter.
Just very quick to make sure I understand, because there's a, seems like there's a lot of overlapping political jurisdictions involved in this, that this is federal funds given to the state of Colorado, a portion of which are allocated to Wheat Ridge, and it's being used to leverage bonds from the City of Lakewood's Housing Authority for a project owned by the Jefferson County Housing Authority that is located in Wheat Ridge.
We, we wanted to make it as difficult as possible. So this has a, this is a complex funding structure, and because we had, we entered into this through a, through another, we had another loan structure that led us down this path, we were unable to issue the bonds ourselves. Normally, we would issue those bonds ourself. The Jefferson County Housing Authority would issue them. We've asked just Metro West to do it for us, so they're issuing the bonds on our behalf. That's why they're involved. There's really no other reason. They're just doing us a favor and issuing the bonds for us since we couldn't do it ourselves. It, it saves us giving the bonds back to CHAF or giving them to the state and going back to the state and requesting, and no guarantee that, you know, they would come our way. I mean, this, once you turn your bonds back to the state, they can go anywhere. It's really not the local jurisdiction's decision anymore.
Thank you. Any additional questions before I close the public hearing and go to a motion? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Ms. Dozeman, a motion is in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 46-2019, a resolution approving the assignment to the housing authority of the City of Lakewood, Colorado, DBA Metro West Housing Solutions of $1,667,715 of the City of Wheat Ridge, Colorado's 2019 private activity bond volume cap allocation from the state ceiling for private activity bonds and authorizing the execution and delivery of an assignment and other documents in connection therewith.
Second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Weaver.
That's the mayor's call.
Okay, we have, we have a motion, and we made a decision on the second. Is there discussion on the motion? Mr. Urban.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's important for those that are looking onto these proceedings, understanding that when we talk about a, a number of 1.6 million dollars, that seems like a tremendous amount of money. And it is, but the way that this is structured is that the private activity bonds allow the Jefferson County Housing Authority to work this deal in such a way that this isn't costing the citizens or taxpayers of Wheat Ridge the 1.6 million dollars. This is us granting the housing authority the ability to borrow money using these bonds. So it's, it's in some ways difficult, but that's what it takes for affordable housing to get done, is to have these complicated capital stacks where you have the Lakewood Housing Authority helping the Jefferson County Housing Authority do a project in Wheat Ridge. But that's what it takes to do affordable housing, and that's the type of work that the housing authority is doing every day. So appreciate their hard work on this one, and I'll be voting in favor.
Thank you. Ms. Sahabi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to note that, you know, we had a presentation at a study session a couple of months ago, and, and I know a lot of us are concerned about how we are able to make sure that we have a diverse housing stock in our community and that affordable housing is a part of that. And one of the suggestions was to maintain the affordable housing that you already have. And so this is really an excellent project that they're bringing to us for us to be able to maintain affordable housing in our community and at an upgrade. So I'm very appreciative.
Thank you. Additional discussion? Before we go to a vote, I'd like to say that I'm, I'm very pleased to have this proposal come forward to us, and I hope that council will endorse it. I think this is a great opportunity to build, to have affordable housing, not just affordable housing, good quality affordable housing. This is housing that's been brought up to date, has playgrounds, has activity rooms, has things for kids, has lighting and safety features so that, so that people who are not able to, to maybe afford, you know, this quality of product, this is going to be available. So anyway, I, I hope we will vote favorably on this. So if there is no more discussion, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. Our next item is agenda item number four. Ms. Weaver, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a council bill Number 11-2019, an ordinance amending sections 11-51, 11-53, and 11-63 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the licensing and regulation of alcoholic beverages. The prior action was on July 1st study session. City council reached the consensus on the remaining issues under consideration and directed staff to bring the attached ordinance forward and finalize revision to its regulations on alcoholic beverages.
Thank you. This is a, an ordinance on second reading. It is a public hearing. Will, and I'm going to open the public hearing. Will the clerk please give me an ordinance number?
This will be ordinance number 1673.
Do we have a staff presentation on this? Ms. Dahl? We do, I'm the staff presentation. Council has been very patient in processing a number of changes to the liquor laws in the city to respond to changes the state legislature has continuously made, and that process will never end, I'm sure. But the state legislature more recently was very active in kind of creating a whole new slew of different kinds of, of licenses to, and to try to describe the different kinds of facilities now that, that offer alcohol either as a primary part of their business or merely incidental to some other activity. And I want to stress that that doesn't mean that the city's got to create a new form of license each time the state does, because we frankly wouldn't be able to do that. We also can't create a new sort of land use designation for these things, and I want to emphasize that there's not a reason to do that, and cities do not do that. There's always more complexity at the state level around liquor licensing, no pejorative intended. They need that for their purposes, but it's not as necessary for local purposes. So the changes here are all in our licensing chapter of, of the code, and, and we're down to the last few that I've gotten direction from you at study session to implement, and this ordinance does that. It defines both entertainment facilities and lodging facilities, which come in all sorts of shapes and sizes, as I think you heard at the study session. The key here is that an entertainment facility has the primary business to provide the public with sports and entertainment. Incidentally, may serve alcohol. Lodging, primary purpose to provide lodging, incidentally, may serve alcohol. Those definitions are then used, first we make the definition, and they're used for a couple of different purposes. The first in the ordinance you'll see is the 500-foot rule. And we all know that 500-foot rule means you can't have a liquor store or a tavern within 500 feet of a school. And now that we have these, this morphing of additional, additional kinds of, of liquor operations, should they be subject to the 500-foot rule or not? Absolutely appropriate local social policy decision that you make. And so you are allowed to, to carve out kinds of facilities that aren't subject to that 500-foot rule. For example, you have done that for hotel and restaurant licenses. The classic H&R license is something that can be within 500 feet of a school, and most cities do that. So what the ordinance does in Section 2, after having defined these facilities, is to make them, as you've directed in the study session, exempt from the 500-foot rule. There's reasons, of course, for that rule, but in the past, you've, you've viewed a real distinction between taverns and liquor stores on the one hand, and the other kinds of places that serve, that serve alcohol on the other. The, the restaurant at the Holiday Inn, we don't have one, but the point is, the, the most cities view that as not something that we're particularly worried about 500-foot rule on. And so that's what Section 2 of the ordinance does. Section 3 of the ordinance, there's this, this other new category of liquor sales room, and there's a lot of, the more detail you probably want around it, but the only thing that we felt was important, and you've directed, is that when there is an application for a liquor sales room, the, the local licensing authority, in our case, liquor licensing authority at the city, refers that notice up to the Department of the Director of Community Development. It is important that we have that kind of referral, because at least in my memory, there was at least one circumstance where, where liquor authority granted a license. Turns out the zoning for that particular operation wasn't, wasn't appropriate, and the, the people got their license and made commitments based on that license, and it was, it was unfair to them and a hardship. And so we just want to make sure that, that there's a zoning check, as there should be for so many things, but this liquor sales room, kind of a new little animal. And lastly, the classification of operators now that, that entertainment facilities and, and lodging facilities have been invented, we need to place them into categories so that we know what fee to charge for that license. And that's what Section 4 of the ordinance does. So this is the last cleanup, probably for another year or so until the legislature comes up with something that we've got to react locally to. Thank you. Thank you. Before I go to questions of council, I want to go to questions or comments from the public. I don't have anyone signed up to speak, but once again, if you haven't signed up, you may still speak on this item. You can come forward to the podium now. Is there anyone who would like to speak on item number four? Okay, I don't see anyone, so we will close that portion and go to questions from council of staff. Ms. Weaver.
Mr. Dahl, this is probably not related to this ordinance, but I just would, if you could just quick explain to me and to others listening. So when a, a rule like the full strength beer that can now be sold in gas stations, does that fall under the five foot, 500-foot rule with schools?
No, because gas, or because that operation is not a, a retail liquor store, which falls, does fall within the 500-foot rule. So it, so the answer is no. It's not a, a retail liquor store or a tavern.
Okay.
And-
So it could be close to-
It could be close. It could be within 500 feet of a school. That's right.
Okay. But this ordinance does not deal with that.
Does not change the, the rule on that at all. Beer, now that we've, we've overcome the 3.2 category in Colorado, which I fondly remember, now beer is just beer, and the, the rules for beer are, are, are the same for all kinds of beer. That's why you're seeing it in grocery stores, which is a kind of a shock to those of us that have spent years not seeing it there. Thank you. Mr. Matthews.
I think along the same lines of what counsel and Weaver was trying, counselated Weaver was trying to do, is just as clarification, I believe, we're just trying to mesh in with the change in state laws here, and this isn't something that we're just kind of taking on all by ourselves. We're just trying to make sure that everything meshes together with the new state laws.
That's exactly right. That's a good characterization. Thank you. Before I close-
Before I close the public hearing and ask for a motion, is there any more questions of staff? Then we're going to close the public hearing and Ms. Weaver, a motion is in order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Council Bill Number 11-2019, an ordinance amending sections 11-51, 11-53, and 11-63 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the licensing and regulation of alcoholic beverages on second reading and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a second by Mr. Keter. So is there discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Excuse me? Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. We will move to item number five. Ms. Hoppe, would you please introduce this item?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is an item on ordinance on first reading, Council Bill Number 13-2019, ordinance amending the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning procedures for protests under Section 5.10 of the Home Room Charter, Case Number 00A-19-03.
Thank you. This is an ordinance on first reading to set the time for a public hearing. Will you please give me a motion?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 13-2019, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning the right of protest procedure for rezoning decisions on first reading, order it published. Public hearing set for Monday, September 9th, 2019, at 7:00 p.m. in City Council Chambers and it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Keter. Will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries seven to one with Council Member Urban voting no.
Thank you. We will move to item number six. Ms. Davis, would you please introduce item number six?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item number six is ordinance for first reading, a referendum of ordinance 1667, Series 2019, with respect to rezoned property at 4,000 to 4066 Uppam Street. At issue, a referendum petition has been found to be sufficient with respect to ordinance 1667, Series 2019, which rezoned property at 4,000 4066 Uppam Street. Under the charter, the council is now required to either repeal the ordinance or refer the same to the voters of the city at the next regular election or at a special election. The earliest date for such election is the November 5th, 2019 general election.
Thank you. Mr. Goff, did we have any report on this?
Yeah, Mr. Dahl gave a report.
Thank you, counsel. You see in your packet that this is identified really as two different kinds of actions, ordinance on first reading and a resolution. And so it's a council action form that covers both because, as it turns out, there is an alternative here and you are required to pick one of these two alternatives. And that's why in the council action form, I listed them both. There's no priority. That's for you to decide, but there's two different actions that you can take tonight and you need to take one or the other of them. There's not a door number three. So the background, I think, most everyone's aware of, but for everyone's benefit, in May, the council adopted a rezoning ordinance for some property at 4,000 Uppam Street. A referendum petition is permitted by the Constitution and your charter was properly filed in on time. The city clerk certified, it is her task under the charter to review petitions and she certified that referendum petition as sufficient. A protest was filed to the referendum petition and you appointed a hearing officer, as the state statute allows you to do, to conduct the hearing on that protest as to the sufficiency of the referendum petition. That hearing was held not so long ago, on August 16th. A few days later, the hearing officer issued her findings and decision finding the petition to be sufficient. A copy of those findings, which are lengthy, is in your packet and it's not my intention to go through them, but they're there for your review. So now that the petition has been finally found to be sufficient, there are no other procedures involved in finding that it is sufficient. It is a sufficient petition and under the charter, you are required to do one of two things, either repeal the ordinance or to set a ballot question and ask the voters whether the ordinance should be repealed. The charter is specific in terms of the language that it requires you to use in part for any such questions and the charter and under referendum refers you to the initiative subsection. The initiative subsection says the question's got to include the words "for the ordinance" and "against the ordinance." So we use those instead of yes and no, which you often see in ballot questions, but your charter has specific language, it must be used. So for a repeal, I've prepared two documents for you, an ordinance that's ready for adoption on first reading to repeal 1667 and set it for second reading public hearing. So if you go that route, it's an ordinance on first reading that can just be approved on first reading. If you choose to go the setting the election route, I provided a resolution, which is how you can set special elections here in the city on issues either by resolution or ordinance. And I've set it up as a resolution and it has a ballot question. And you'll notice the ballot question tracks exactly the summary of ordinance 1667 as found on the petition with the addition of the words, you know, "go into effect with a question mark." The summary wasn't a question, I had to create a question and you're required to style it as a question. So it's styled shell ordinance 1667, which does the following things, summary from the petition, "go into effect." Then you have "for the ordinance" and "against the ordinance." Case law and the statute require that, to the greatest degree possible, you structure ballot questions so that yes means yes and no means no. There's always an art to that. Here, I think, is fairly straightforward. You could certainly consider adjusting language. I spent a little time thinking about other alternatives and this appeared to me to be the most straightforward. But that's up to the level of not confusing the voters, that's up to you. But it is my job to prepare a draft for you and I've done that. With respect to the date of election, again, if you go to the election option rather than repeal, there's a series of statutes I didn't bore you with that have X number of days before the election and Y number of days after a general election. You can't have a special election in that zone and we're almost at that zone, in fact we are now, but you can have your special question at the same time as the general election. Of course, we have one on November 5th. I structured the question that I wrote and the date to be November 5th, but you are also permitted to have a special election and I've given you the election dates after November 5th, which started, I think, in December sometime, late December. And it has to be a Tuesday and so you apply all the requirements and there's a half dozen additional dates that would be later than November 5th if you wanted to choose that and your charter lets you do it. The charter says when you get a sufficient referendum petition, if you're going to send it to election, it has to be at the next regular municipal election, which is November 5th, or at a special election, says the charter. So that's a thumbnail sketch. You are required to take one of these two actions and be happy to answer any questions after you've taken any public testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. We will go now to public comment on this and I have one person signed up to speak, Kathy If you would like to come forward and adjust the microphone and give us your first name and last name and your address.
Kathy Havens, H-A-V-E-N-S, 7060 West 39th Avenue, Wheat Ridge. I'm here tonight speaking for Judy Capra, who carried the petition, sponsored the petition, and worked her heart out getting the petition passed. I also carried petitions and I carried those petitions in several different places and I talked to a lot of people. Frankly, about 90% of the people that I approached signed, or at least 90% of those people who were Wheat Ridge residents. There were a variety of different ages, people much older than I am actually, and people much younger, who signed. And what I heard over and over was, "we love our neighborhood, we've left the Highlands." I heard that quite frequently, I was surprised at that. "We left the Highlands because they were building things just like these townhomes in our neighborhoods. We had no place to park, we didn't have sidewalks, we had difficulty getting our kids to school, the traffic was tremendous." Traffic is the biggest reason that I came upon for signing the petition. When we increase density, we increase traffic. There's been no traffic study done for this. There were several traffic studies done in the early 2000s and, I think, the latest one, 2013, regarding 44th and Uppam, where we now have the senior housing with, I think, 100 more units to go in, quite a few more units. There hasn't been any traffic study done regarding these 38 units. Apparently, the city doesn't have the necessary resources to do traffic studies. In fact, the traffic studies that were done, were done by private agencies on behalf of various builders. I think at the very least, you owe the citizens who live there and have relied on their zoning a traffic study and an independent traffic study at that. The other problem is the planned development. It makes it sound, my goodness, we're going to do a beautiful, beautiful development and everybody's going to have access to a golf course and a swimming pool. No. Planned residential development is just a way to sneak around the rules required for R1 or R2 zoning and build high density. That's all it is, at least that's all it is here in the city of Wheat Ridge. I would hope that you would reconsider this. I would hope that you would consider the 2,000-plus people who signed petitions. I would hope that maybe you'd each spend a day down at the rec center or over at the senior center or just on the corner of 38th and High Court by the bike store. I've spent time on all three of those corners and trust me, you're going to learn what people are thinking about. And it's not going to be young people, old people, middle-aged people. It's going to be the full citizenry of Wheat Ridge and they're more than willing to talk, as was evident tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Havens is the only speaker I had signed up. Is there anyone who hasn't signed who would like to speak at this time? You may come forward.
Raleigh Sorrentino, S-O-R-R-E-N-T-I-N-O, 4175 Teller Street. Several months ago, starting in February, March, April, and May, this council heard dozens of citizens come in here and plead with you to stop this ordinance and stop the PRD. You were unable to conclude that with the citizens. Now you have in front of you a referendum with nearly 2,000 signatures of your citizens and your constituents. These are electors in the city of Wheat Ridge. You cannot turn your back on them anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who hasn't signed who would like to speak on this matter at this time? You may come forward. I don't see any more members of the public who would like to speak. I will open the floor up to questions from council. Ms. Davis.
Thank you. Mr. Dahl, I just have a couple of questions, so, since I get the honor of doing the motion. So, of course, one of the things we could do is repeal the ordinance and then have it open for a public hearing on Monday, September 9th. Or we could also just put it up for the vote of the people, which is, you know, the vote of the people and let them vote. If we, I just have a question from a timing standpoint, maybe I need to ask the clerk this as well, is if we go into the public hearing on September 9th and we decide from the public hearing to still put it on the ballot, you know, based off of comments and discussions, do we have time or what kind of timeframe do we need to put any ballot language on?
No, you don't. Tonight is really your last opportunity to have it on the November 5th ballot because there is a deadline to get ballot language to the county clerk and recorder for the coordinated election ballot. If you didn't do that tonight and you chose instead on September 9th to do it, it would be clearly special election and it would be by that time, one of the later election dates that I described, December 10th, at the earliest, I'd have to recalculate. Janelle and I have to get together and do the sort of little math computational thing you do. But tonight's meeting is the last opportunity you would have to get it on the November 5th ballot if you wanted to.
Additional questions on this item? Mr. Keter.
Just because we've had a bunch of permutations through all this, is this just a majority vote of council?
Yes, that's correct. This is not a rezoning, it's an action that you take.
Thank you.
Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. procedurally wise, I'm still a little bit trying to puzzle through this myself. For one thing, if we do this as a ordinance and go to repeal the previous ordinance, if I read the charter, I think we're almost forced to repeal it or put it on the ballot. Is there any chance that if we go through this and vote, that someone can ask for a reconsideration later and then cause another vote? I mean, what rules there? Because I'm a little concerned because we had this happen once.
I understand. Because the charter is clear, once you have a sufficient referendum petition and you have a sufficient referendum petition, you have to do one or the other of these things. And following your question, I gave a little thought to that and I thought about, well, what about first and second reading? Clearly, that's important because that is your process to repeal an ordinance, you'd do the same process as you did to adopt, I'm getting your question. So it's clearly, it's two readings unless you do an emergency ordinance. But if, for example, on second reading, the approval of the repealer ordinance failed, I'd be sitting here and telling you, well, it's clear, you have not now chosen, you've taken your time to think about door number two and have chosen not to do it. So your other door that you are now really required to do would be to send to election. Now, if the ordinance, the repealer ordinance were approved and your council rules still apply, you know, it's not because there's referendum, they don't apply. So you might have to go through reconsiderations, rare, but you're right, we've had reconsideration. You might have to go through it, but there is an endpoint to that process as well. And if at the endpoint to that process, you have an effective repealer ordinance, you've satisfied your requirements, your obligation under the charter. If at the end of that process, you have not, you haven't approved an effective repealer ordinance, then you must go to election because the charter commands that.
And in that particular scenario, then we would be forced to set up a special election.
That's correct, yeah. Because of the timeframe, tonight's kind of the last shot on the coordinated election.
Is there further discussion by council? Questions by council before I close and ask for a motion? Okay, Ms. Davis, may I please have a motion?
Okay, I'm going to do this based off the discussion we just had. I move to approve Resolution Number 47-2019, a resolution referring to ordinance 1667, Series 2019, to the regular municipal election to be held November 5th, 2019, and setting a ballot question therefore.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the motion?
I would like a little discussion.
Who was the second, please?
Mr. Keter was the second. Ms. Davis.
I just want to make a couple of comments on this. You know, it's, you know, from a timing perspective, I think, you know, Mr. Matthews made a good point as far as if we'd have to go into a special election if things were to change, if we did have it under a public comment and the flow was going differently. From the folks, from everyone sitting and everyone speaking tonight, you know, the point is, they said, you know, let our community decide. So I think that this is the reason why I chose this motion, is for the community to decide. And the final thing, because unfortunately, I think we've all been put into this, I think, Ms. Sheen- Ms. Shaver's daughter was in the middle of it too, just not to, and mentioned it tonight, is that, in the words of Mr. Figless, I just hope that when, when, as, as far as when we're running for office, or when issues on a ballot come on up like this, is that we all communicate. And I know this is always difficult. We don't even see it in federal campaigns. But we always communicate and, to our neighbors and our groups, the information and the facts. And so I think it's important for that information to get out to the public as well, and why I chose this, and based off of other outreach that I've had.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to read real fast the suggested ballot language, which is shall ordinance 1667, series 2019, and ordinance rezoning real property at 4,000 through 4,066, Uppam Street, city of Wheat Ridge, from residential R3 to planned residential PRD with an outlined development plan, ODP, allowing for 38 townhome units and nine buildings go into effect. And it's, you vote for the ordinance or against the ordinance. So I just wanted to make sure that, for those who don't have packets in front of them, saw that. And then I also just wanted to make note, just real quickly, that Jenny Shaver, I wanted to let her know that in the official notes and document from the, from the protest hearing, it does, it does clearly say that the protesters did not introduce evidence that the subpoena was in fact served. So I might just hope that that helps you make, makes you feel a little bit better, that it is on record that they didn't actually, in fact, serve you with that. So that's all I have to say.
Additional discussion. Ms. Weaver.
I will be supporting this for all of the reasons that you mentioned. I also want to go back a bit to the original decision. And, and I'd like to remind people, as it, as it, if it goes to a vote of the people that we're discussing, because there's several things that have been brought up tonight, R1 and R3, and, and I'd like to clarify that this case was a specific zoning change from R3 to a PRD, okay? And the reason I have, I supported this project are, is a personal story, because I live in a single-family home, and to my right is an R3, and to my left is an R3. And that's what I look at. And so it was very personal for me to think about, as a citizen of Wheat Ridge, what, given that choice, that these are zoned R3, would I want to personally look out my window and see a development that was, a PRD is a very specific site plan that has to be, it cannot be changed, and that's why it's called a planned development. And so for me, the option, the option isn't R1, it's R3 or this planned development. So for me personally, I felt the planned development was a lot nicer than what I happened to look out at every day. So that's why I'll be supporting this, and I hope all of you will think about what, what the choices really are on that ballot, if it goes to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Additional question, or, Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, I'll be supporting this. The right of citizens to petition their government is fundamental to our republic, to our country. And for our city, it's an absolute right and necessity and a sign of a healthy democracy when we have residents come forward and say, no, that's not what we want, we want something else. And this process of a petition and a referendum gives the, the people a voice when they feel they don't have a voice representing them. And so, in this respect, the, I supported the, the appointment of an additional hearing officer for the protest matter. But as I look at the protest, I want to support a person's desire to protest their, the process and be able to, have ability to redress the grievances that they have regarding the protests. But at the same time, there has to be a modicum of decency and respect of your fellow citizens when you bring into a protest hearing the integrity of the city clerk and others, it just speaks ill of the process. And I would encourage us to not go down that path, and encourage us to be more respectful of our neighbors. And the, it doesn't help your message or your argument if you're going to berate the citizens in that matter. So I'll be voting in favor of this.
Thank you. Mr. Keter.
I also will be voting in favor, and I've been on council for seven months, and if my memory is correct, this is the sixth meeting that we've addressed this particular project. So all of the other discussions and reasons are valid, but also, we need some level of closure on this. And I, I understand that, that however the vote goes is not going to end the debate over the underlying principle, but we just, we just need to figure out what's going on here, and then see if there's a way that we can move forward together.
Thank you. Is there additional discussion on the motion? Mr. Matthews.
I will also support the motion to go to an election. We've been, we've heard someone mention tonight that, you know, our sampling database is too small. And I think this gives us an opportunity to take a look and see how people across the city are looking at high-density developments. I wish we could do it sooner for the folks and put the question to bed, but this will end up not going to the election in November. And I hope that everybody on council, whether I'm still here or not, that council after November will take to heart something I've been preaching for four years, that we need to listen to the people. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there additional discussion on the motion? Ms. Hoppe.
I would just like to make note that just because I disagree with some votes that council member Matthews has, does not mean that I do not listen to the, to the citizens. And impugning those motives on council on a regular basis is inappropriate.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, will the clerk please poll the council?
Motion carries eight to zero.
Thank you. That concludes the business portion of our meeting. We will now go to city managers' matters. Mr. Dahl.
Probably still the thunder, I'll leave it for Janice. Do you want to talk about Hobby Lobby? You can talk about Hobby Lobby, right? Just a quick update on the Rocky Mountain Bottle Company noise mitigation issue. They did, Rocky Mountain did send a letter out, as I requested, to the surrounding neighborhood to at least start a communication with them, that yes, there's a problem and they're working on it. I just found out today that their Rocky Mountain Bottle should receive a proposal this Thursday from Prax Air, that's the company that installed the equipment in question that's making the noise. And they have, they should submit a proposal by Thursday that talks about potential solutions in a timeframe to hopefully mitigate some of that noise. So we'll continue to keep the citizens' update as we hear more information.
Thank you very much. City attorneys' matters, Mr. Dahl.
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Elected officials' matters, we'll start with our clerk, Ms. Shaver.
Yes, I just wanted to say, we, the deadline has passed now for folks who wanted to run for office. We will have a race in all the districts, and, and of course, that ballot issue now. And I wanted to, I want to tell the candidates, we've had to change the date for the lot drawing from, it's going to be September 4th. And I really apologize, it has to do with room availability and some other things, but, so it's going to be on September 4th. And then also, I wanted to, an issue came up late this afternoon about the clerk's website and what, what information is available about what candidates and so on. And I just wanted to tell you that when people were starting to turn in their petitions, we had the hearing, the 16th, and that was, Robin and I were in this room from 10:00 AM until after 6:00 o'clock at night. Then the weekend happened, and then Robin had scheduled vacation for three days, so he couldn't do anything on the website. Then he was back one day, and had a lot of, of course, a lot of catch-up work to do, which didn't include updating the website with new petition information and who had filed and all of that. And then on Friday, he was at a training class up in Thornton all day. So now we're, today's Monday, and it's been kind of a firestorm of people coming in with their petitions and so on, and a few other issues that have, have cropped up today regarding that. And so the website isn't updated yet, but we'll get to it as soon as we can. We're just really trying to get everything done, there's a lot. And it's nothing intentional, it's just, there's only so much time and so many people. So we'll, we'll do that as soon as we can.
You're doing the best you can, that's the best we should expect. Ms. Davis?
I just have a quick question. I mean, I think everyone in their day-to-day jobs work and multitasking. Is there other folks that can post on the website to support? I mean, I think that that-
We could give that to Sarah. We could.
Yeah.
Except-
I just think it's-
She's not on our floor, and it's hard to get, I guess, we could try harder to get to her. She could do it. And, Patrick, is there another fellow, not, that, does website that's down there?
Yeah, we have numerous folks that, that you just need to let us know, we can, we can help you out.
Okay, good. Well, maybe we'll do that, take you up on that.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did attend the hearing on the petition, and as the only retired guy kind of here on the council, I thought age remained for me to do it, from that standpoint, to represent council and the people, and B, it was an education process. It really, democracy is, and the way we do our government is a messy deal, but hopefully we come to the proper solution at the end. But it was very interesting, even though it was a long, long day, as Mr. Dahl can testify to. And thank you, Mr. Dahl, for bringing up the noise issue again. And I want to assure my constituents up there that we're not going to let this slide. It's just another one of those, just processes that takes a while, and, and we'd be more intent on hurrying them along, but yet we want to make sure that their engineering processes are gone through so that the final result is actually satisfactory, and that we do get the desired results. To that note then, I'll mention Hobby Lobby a little bit. I missed the grand opening, I couldn't make it that morning, but Hobby Lobby out at Youngfield Open had their grand opening, and the Sierra and the Home Goods Store is going to be opening in probably another month. It's kind of exciting to see. I just drove through there today, the new parking lot, and it's, it's, my wife went to the grand opening and soft opening both, she couldn't stay away twice. They were three days apart, but she says it's a beautiful store, and has been laid out very well as a retail professional, that's what her career was. She had, gave them very high marks for what they're doing. So we have something, I think, very special to look forward to there. And just as a quick update for Clear Creek Crossing, work is going on there. All of us went out there to, several of us were there at a groundbreaking ceremony, which was kind of a photo op really, but we got, I got, have some updates from Tyler, from, for what's going on up there. And for those of you that can't tell the difference, construction is underway for both the I-70 ramps and associated roadworks to connect the ramps locally to 32nd Avenue, and they hope to have part of that done by the end of this year, and then the bridge work and others will take place later. But by the end of this year, you will actually be getting off the highway in one direction and going down to 32nd off the new construction. The leasing team out there has been focused on entertainment and restaurant anchors for the project, and they're trying to maximize a synergy between all of the, all of the future tenants out there, trying to make sure that it's kind of a measured and balanced mix, and that everybody, everything works together, and that they just match. I mean, you don't want to put two Walmarts next door to each other, but there's a balance. Foothills Credit Union is under contract to purchase pad site north of the Hook ramps, and the only other retail they have right now is a come-and-go, just fuel and convenience store that will be available. And they've also reached a grant, an agreement with Brand Hospitality for the sale of the hotel pad at 40th and Clear Creek for a 125 Key Hampton Inn and Suites. So apparently that is well underway. And the Harvest Village team is going to submit an SDP application very soon for the retail portion of things, and I think we're going to see some exciting things happening. And also, multifamily parcel will purchase their parcel from Evergreen and begin site improvements in 2019. So that's kind of a quick update on progress of what's going on out there.
Thank you. Mr. Keter.
Thank you. So some of you may have heard that it was just, I think, just over a week ago, that a bicyclist was struck and killed by a hit-and-run driver in Arvada. The victim was a member of our community, and his wife is a committed and active volunteer for the city, and that, yeah, I almost said accident. It happened in Arvada, but I don't think any of us could honestly tell ourselves that it couldn't happen here. Wheat Ridge has come a long way in the 13 years I've lived here in terms of emphasizing and prioritizing bicycle pedestrian safety and infrastructure, but all of us, those of us on council, staff, the public, we all need to do even better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman?
Sorry, I made me tear up a little bit. Thank you for bringing that to our attention, but I was able to attend the ribbon-cutting for Hobby Lobby this morning, and it is a beautiful store, and we are going to be seeing the rest of the retail open. And one, Sierra Trading Goods should be open within a week of Sunday, and then Alta and Home Goods should be opening sometime in early October. So I just want to welcome them to our community. It's bringing additional tax revenue to our, to our community, as well as employment. So this, I think, is a really good thing for Wheat Ridge, and I'm excited to see some of the retail spaces that are going to be coming in. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to recognize that August 31st, August 31st is International Overdose Awareness Day. And this day aims to raise awareness of overdose and reduce the stigma of drug-related death that is also acknowledges the grief felt by families and friends remembering those who have died who have permanent injuries a result of drug overdose. International Overdose Awareness Day spreads the message that the tragedy of overdose death is preventable. Thousands of people die each year from drug overdose. They come from all walks of life. Do you recognize the signs and symptoms of overdose? What is the impact of drug use and overdose on family, friends, and those experiencing it? So just wanted to take that and make sure people are aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis?
I just mirror everything that folks said regarding our new developments, and also the loss of a community member. I also would encourage folks, I will say, in our neighborhood, Melrose Manor had their 13th annual block party, and we had probably about 90 folks there, and West Metro showed up, and it was a great event. And I would encourage folks in their neighborhoods to create the block parties and those get-togethers amongst your neighborhood. They're always a big hit and good way to get to know your neighbors.
Thank you. Ms. Weaver.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would just like to thank everyone who got up tonight and, and said how they feel, and also the comments around civility, and, you know, this is the democratic process. um, and especially those people in District Three, and I want to thank everybody for coming from District Three to talk tonight, um, that we are listening. Um, I can tell you personally, in District Three, George and I read every email. We try and call people back. Um, we try, if, if need be, meet individually. Um, we are listening, and I, I also want to say that while we're listening to people who, who email us and come to meetings, we're also listening to other people that have other opinions that live in all sorts of the districts, right? Our one, our two, our three, um, and our business community as well. Um, so, so I just want to remind everybody that, that we're, we are working very hard and to always listen, and I really, really appreciate people coming out, uh, tonight. This is the process, that actually it's hard and it's messy, uh, as has been talked about, but it actually makes me feel really good, and I get excited when I say the Pledge of Allegiance and we do this together. It's, it's pretty cool. So thank you, everybody, and, um, and keep coming.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
Um, thank you. I'm not going to repeat everything that, uh, Councilmember Weaver stated. I agree with it. Um, I will repeat just one thing, and that's thank you to everyone who showed up. Um, and I, I know that we encourage that in, in the, uh, in our correspondence, and I'm glad to see it and look forward to seeing more participation moving forward.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Um, it was a beautiful morning at the Hobby Lobby this morning, and we were, Councilmember Weaver and Dozeman and I were joined by the Wheat Ridge Chamber to, um, cut the ribbon, and that was, um, very exciting, so I'm happy to see them open. I also want to say, as far as the noise goes at the Rocky Mountain Bottling Company, um, Councilmember Matthews and Dozeman asked for that to be brought up to a study session, and, um, it's been scheduled for a special study session on September twenty-third because our schedule for study sessions is pretty full. And then I'd also like to bring up, um, on October seventh, currently, we have, um, scheduled, uh, that we will have a presentation on People Speak, which is an online public outreach software for land use and public hearings, and so, um, that'll be an interesting, uh, presentation. I'm, I'm excited to, um, find new and, um, explore larger ways to be able to, um, have our citizens tell us what they think. So, thanks.
Thank you. Um, I would, uh, I was very fortunate to, um, on, on Tuesday morning last, participate in a Jefferson County Comprehensive Homeless Count that has been going on through the month of August to try to, uh, identify, uh, locations and individuals who are experiencing homelessness, uh, in an effort by the county to be able to craft solutions or craft a way to move forward to address this issue. It, uh, it comes up at virtually every public meeting I go to. The, the, uh, the housing crisis, I, I co-chair the, or I chair the Metro Mayor's Caucus Committee on Housing, Hunger, and Homelessness, and, and it's an issue that's, uh, that's in our society. I think it's going to take all of us as a community to, to get together to understand sort of the, the issues as they exist in our community and, um, and reach out with compassion and try to, try to develop solutions. And I'm, I'm really buoyed that the council approved the Caesar Square apartment, uh, because that keeps people out of homelessness, and I think that's good for all of us. Uh, I would like to echo Mr. Uh, Mr. Keter's, uh, mention of, of a tragic loss in our community, and our hearts go out and, and sympathies and condolences to the family. Um, be, be careful, and, uh, and also, uh, school, uh, school is back in session for, for our young ones, and, uh, and let's be extra careful with them, because they are, they're the future that we hold in our hands. And, uh, next week is Labor Day, and I hope everyone will, uh, will have a very safe and, uh, and happy holiday. So with that, we will stand adjourned.
Special study session. Oh, well, okay, I'll wait a moment here when we get, until we get our clerk back in. For the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for August 26, 2019. I would like to start with citizen comment on any agenda item. Do we have a sign up sheet, Mr. Goff? Okay. Okay. Is there anyone here from the public who has not signed up to speak tonight who would like to speak on any of these four agenda items? Mr. Pettit, please, come to the podium, introduce yourself.
Good evening, David Pettit, P-E-T-T-I-T, 5720 West Asbury Place, Lakewood, Colorado. I am here tonight with the other board members of the Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival with our annual ask for $100,000 this year. I'm here to answer any questions. Our last festival, the 50th Anniversary Festival for Wheat Ridge, was the best year yet we've ever had. I feel we put on an amazing event for the city of Wheat Ridge and the residents. Overwhelming number of people, for the first time ever since I've been involved, we actually ran out of beer. So, we covered it, though. I mean, you have a few kegs, Mr. Mayor, from your restaurant, you haven't noticed them yet, but it was a very successful event.
I've got a deposit on those empties, so.
What's that?
I've got a deposit on the empties.
Exactly, yes, we'll get the deposit back to you. A very successful event this year, the music, the fireworks. Want to thank all of our volunteers. We were able to raise, we think at our first estimate, the festival's only two weeks ago, about $50,000 going back to our nonprofits this year, which are the Wheat Ridge Rotary, Wheat Ridge Optimists, the Wheat Ridge Kiwanis, and Wheat Ridge High School are the heavy beneficiaries, which is very exciting for us, it's why we do what we do as volunteers. So I'm here for any questions that you guys might have.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
We will call on you when we get to that agenda item.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. With the council's permission, we will move Agenda Item Number One down to the bottom of the, bottom of the agenda, if there's no objections to that, and we will start then with Item Number Two, the Carnation Festival 2020 Budget Request. Mr. Goff, do you have presentations on these, and I know we have, we have the agency.
Yeah, we have, I believe, representations, representatives from all agencies, and just, just maybe a quick introduction, these are requests that we received from these four different agencies, and the city staff has not made any changes to, to the request at this time, we're waiting for City Council direction before we add these into the 2020 budget.
Okay. Are there, then, I guess we'll throw it open to, to. Yeah, we could do that, or open, open to questions, is Carnation Festival, do you guys want to make a presentation?
You just got it, a few minutes ago.
All right.
No, I don't necessarily have a presentation.
Okay.
You have our budget, our proposed budget for 2020 was included in the packet.
Good.
We are here simply to answer questions.
Okay.
As needed.
Excellent, okay, we'll open, we'll open with questions from council then. Ms. Davis.
I just have a question, I know in the past, we had hired someone to help manage it, and we, we still have a fee of events administration, and that's $35,000, what is the lion's share of, like, that money?
So I'm going to default to our treasurer, Chris Miller, who is here to answer any budgetary questions.
Thank you.
Operational questions I can answer, Chris is going to take any budget questions.
Thank you.
So, administration really includes things that aren't specific to the event, but overhead, things like maybe a little bit of the advertising that goes into the event, we had to pay for certain permits and such, I don't have a lot of specifics on that number, but there are things that are just not necessarily connected to the event, so we might buy some things that support the event throughout the year, so those are some of my examples.
So I guess my question would be, because I know this is always a big question, if it be local works or the Carnation Festival, is what kind of staff, you know, because a lot of times, you know, we say this is a completely volunteer establishment, et cetera, et cetera, or are we paying some folks to be doing certain things? We used to have someone that used to come in and do kind of the programs and stuff, so I, I think that, I mean, because in here you see marketing and advertising, so you see some of the things you, you kind of brought up, so I'm, to me, when I see that administration, I'm thinking that's labor costs.
Yeah, so a lot of that has rolled into, security is under administration, we've had to up security these past years, just because of, you know, global events, US events, the last two years, we've added a lot of extra security, radios, golf carts, anything administratively that we need to operate, we put under that line item in the budget.
Thank you.
We have a detailed P and L, we're always willing to share, we just want to make it as simple as possible.
Okay, Ms. Hoppe.
Yeah, so I, I just want to clarify, I'm pretty sure that I know the answer to this, but you guys don't have any actual staff that's paid, it's a, it's a complete volunteer board that pulls this off, the people who are paid are, let's say, stagehands for that day to do the staging and that kind of stuff?
Exactly, so we have, like I said, outside security that we pay, we do pay small administration throughout the year, which would be like hourly workers to help manage our vendors as they apply, just kind of the day to day, we keep that cost very little versus when we had an event planner, we feel like we're very far ahead of the game without an event planner, the board, the volunteer board handles the management, but we do hire some people for the day to day things, which falls under that.
Thank you. Additional questions? Okay, Ms. Hoppe.
I just wanted, just wanted, I don't have questions, I just wanted to go to discussion. I think that the Carnation Festival is super awesome, we moved here in, we bought our commercial building in 2010, and our, very shortly after that, we moved our residence, our residents here from Denver, and my 11-year-old now has spent every year except for one there, and that was because we were moving one of our sisters into college, and she was not happy about that, I was told that was not happening again, and therefore, we missed last year, but we were here this year. And so I just want to say, I, I understand, I spent a lot of years doing large event planning, and I understand the massive amount of time and effort it goes into it, and I certainly appreciate, I know you guys are a year-round volunteer board, and I appreciate all your work, and I'd like to support your request for $100,000 for next year.
Is that a consensus question?
I don't want to cut anybody's discussion off, but I'll be willing to make that consensus.
We'll have more, more, so we have a discussion on that proposal?
Great, then I'll make, I would like to ask for consensus to grant the Carnation Festival 2020 Budget Request of $100,000.
Looks like we have consensus there. Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Pettit.
Thank you so much, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Appreciate it. I would like to invite the Mary Ann Schilling to come, come up, and are you here? Or are you, well, you can stay there, too, that's, you know, that's back in the, in the, in the, you know, the non-lighted section of the gallery, but we'll, we'll see if we can. Bless you, appropriately light you up.
Thank you, tonight we're going to have Joy Op and Amy D. Pierre from Sustainable Wheat Ridge, who are going to be presenting on the 2020 budget.
Okay. All right, Ms. Op, thank you for coming, please adjust the micro, please adjust the microphone, so it.
Happens every time, and I wear my heels, just for this occasion. All right. There we are. Thank you, council and Mayor Starker, my name is Joy Op, co-chair of Sustainable Wheat Ridge. On behalf of Sustainable Wheat Ridge, we appreciate your time and your commitment to a livable and sustainable community. Over the next few minutes, my co-chair Amy and I will review our accomplishments to date, provide an update on what is still to come this year, and review the initiatives we recommend for 2020. At the end, we will submit a 2020 Budget Request. Yee, this thing's fast. In January, we onboarded a few new members to the committee and began the process of outlining our goals for the year. We moved from a drafting phase to implementation in early spring. A quick welcome to our six new members, who are dedicating their valuable time to this important work, and as in the past, the committee is made up of professionals from NREL, the EPA, engineers, experts in digital communication, et cetera. In order to advance our messaging and become more easily identifiable, we are grateful for the design expertise of a city-coordinated graphic expert who created logos for each of our topic areas. We branded each of our focus areas with these logos, each of which represent the topic areas that were determined by city council, so when you see this logo, you know that the messaging pertains to that subject. This spring, the committee was asked to participate in a local sustainability panel hosted by Edgewater as they began their process of starting their own action plan. We participated along with Jefco and Lakewood, and we're thrilled to offer our experience in building the plan for Wheat Ridge. As part of the 50-year anniversary for the city, the committee coordinated and paid for a tree which is growing on the northwest side of the rec center, just east of the soccer field. Next month, we will be recognizing local green businesses that have shown sustainable practices, such as enhancing energy efficiency and sustainable procurement. The application period is still open until August 30. We look forward to recognizing these businesses at the September 24 Business Awards. And finally, we are honored and excited that we were awarded a grant from Charge Ahead Colorado to install the first charging station at a municipal location in Wheat Ridge. Hold your applause, please.
All right.
This charging station will be located at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center, and will be available for staff and visitors to use while spending time at the center. Early in the year, we began the implementation of the Excel Home Energy Squad audits. These audits have been subsidized by the committee to provide a 50% discount for all Wheat Ridge residents. In case you haven't had your own energy audit, Excel will come to your home, replace all of your bulbs with LEDs, install a low-flow showerhead, repair damaged weather stripping, and test for leaks. Once the discount code and contract were approved in June, we began appearing at local events, including the Local Works Critterium, Friday Night Live, and the upcoming Ridge Fest. To date, we have about 30 people signed up and saving money on their energy bills, with each month doubling the previous month's signups. We've been incentivizing residents to sign up for these audits by handing out conservation kits to residents when they sign up. So these are the kits that Excel gave to us, and they include several LED light bulbs, and a solar phone charger, and a backpack, so these are worth a lot of money, we're handing these out as people sign up for information on the energy audit. Excel's partner in energy program has been a great success, and at the request of council, last year, we allocated $7,500 toward this program that directly benefits Wheat Ridge residents. This is real quick, a testimonial, I personally had an energy audit at my house, and I loved it, I'm just going to go ahead and read this one. "I had my Excel audit today, wow, what a fantastic program. For $75, I got two new showerheads, 29 new LED light bulbs, a new thermostat, a door with weather stripping, and a new faucet aerator. I also got excellent advice on how to prioritize my next steps in making my house more efficient. The young man who did my audit was fantastic, thank you, I'm so pleased." We're very proud of this program. "The remainder of the year has some great projects upcoming. The committee is overseeing a bike, walk, ride audit of the city in coordination with ADATs. The committee will oversee a rain barrel rebate program for interested residents. We're coordinating a quarterly community meeting around sustainability practices. In October, we're supporting a Clear Creek Cleanup Day, put on by the River Network. The September Business Awards will include the first sustainable business recognition, and the committee intends to apply for another Charge Ahead Colorado grant with a potential location for installation here at City Hall." So at this time, I'm going to hand it over to Amy for the remainder of the presentation.
Hello, council, Mayor Starker, everyone, my name is Amy D. Pierre, and thank you, Joy, for sharing our accomplishments this past year and what were planned for the rest of it. During my time today, I'm going to provide you with an overview of the programming we're recommending for next year, 2020, and I'll briefly touch on, let's see, each of the bulletin items, it is fast, on this page here, and each one represents kind of a specific program that the committee would like to implement. So first on the list is Sustainable Neighborhoods, and this program was developed by the city of Lakewood, basically to help cities create resident-level neighborhood groups, and these groups then facilitate and implement sustainable projects that are focused on their neighborhood's unique needs. The program is currently certifying 26 neighborhoods in three cities, being Lakewood, Denver, and Fort Collins. And then, as Joy had alluded to previously, the committee intends to create and host, in partnership with local businesses, a quarterly community engagement event around sustainability, in order to bring residents together for education and networking purposes, and then these events would also be a way for residents to provide valuable feedback that the committee could utilize when prioritizing recommendations for the city. Next, we're investigating the potential of partnering with a garden-in-the-box type program next spring, in order to provide an easy way for Wheat Ridge residents to enhance their home gardens, and so they can either grow food, or plant pollinator gardens, or procure plants that are tailored for Colorado soil. And along those lines, next Earth Day will be the 50th Anniversary, much like this year is Wheat Ridge's, but Sustainable Wheat Ridge has been asked by Wheat Ridge Parks, Forestry, and Open Space Division to help plan an Earth Day 50th Anniversary event in April of 2020, stay tuned for details on that event to be determined. Wheat Ridge is also recommending the development, as you heard Joy mention, a green business certification program, in order to recognize businesses who are resourceful and efficient, and then this will culminate in an award rather than just recognition next year during the annual business awards. In addition to the Charge Ahead Colorado grant that we were awarded and plan to resubmit for, the committee will continue to identify and pursue other grant opportunities related to sustainability as they come up. As you can see, the committee has accomplished quite a bit already, and has some bold intentions for the upcoming year, and in order to amplify our programming, support important sustainability initiatives, and to expedite the implementation of the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program, Sustainable Wheat Ridge would like to, once again, recommend that the city consider funding at least a part-time sustainability coordinator, in particular, the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program would greatly benefit by having a dedicated staff member. One note, though, because we're realists as well, is that while working with a sustainability coordinator would be ideal, sooner rather than later, this program could be marginally implemented without one by leaning on our current staff resources and volunteers. Sustainable Wheat Ridge, which was RASK at the time, made this recommendation to hire a city staff member specifically tasked with sustainability in June of 2018, and we continue to echo this sentiment, we hope you will take this into close consideration for the future. And then, now for the money part, this is our budget, our request for 2020, and as Sustainable Wheat Ridge implements sustainability-related goals, and continues to partner with local agencies, the community, the committee is focused on enhancing its impact and acting as a city-community liaison for sustainability. Most of these items have been discussed on previous slides, and to reiterate, this budget request would allow Sustainable Wheat Ridge to continue partnering with Excel Energy on their Partners in Energy program, to support green businesses, to host community events, to provide opportunities for residents to compost, plan an event for Earth Day's 50th Anniversary, promote active transportation, and implement a Sustainable Neighborhoods Program. As you can see, the largest line item is the Sustainable Neighborhoods Program, the reason for this is because the program would allow for a highly coordinated effort that engages residents with their own programming, and actually allows for multiple projects to be simultaneously implemented across all six of the Wheat Ridge Sustainability Action Plan focus areas. This budget number includes training, licensing, and signage fees for the certification program, and our goal would be to onboard two neighborhoods annually. Approval of this budget is another bold step toward making Wheat Ridge a welcoming and livable place for residents, thank you for your time and attention, we'll be here and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. All right, we'll go to council, do we have questions for the Sustainable Wheat Ridge? Ms. Weaver.
About how many people, or what are your statistics on how many people you've, you've touched in the last year through the programming?
That's a great question, we'd have to get back to you, we have 11 committee members, and we all basically have kind of a different project that we work on, so we'd have to probably solicit, we don't have that information offhand, yeah.
The largest outreach has been at a couple of the local works events, just promoting the Excel Energy Program.
Mr. Matthews.
Thank you, on the charging station at the rec center, the $9,000, does that cover the entire installation cost? The grant?
No, the grant covered the majority of the installation for the EV station, and the city's covering the remainder of the budget.
In or out of your budget?
Mary Ann might have the exact figures.
So the grant covers up to $9,000, or up to 80% of the cost of the installation of the charging stations, so $9,000 is the max, we anticipate getting the entire amount, and there should be about, I would say, $3,000-ish, that would be city-funded by the rest of it coming out of the general fund.
Was that budgeted originally?
No, it's not budgeted, it's something we're, are we included in the 2020 budget? Was it the 19, I can't remember, it's not budgeted, no, but we didn't know we had the grant until just a couple of weeks ago, so if, if, if we move forward, we'll find the money in this year's budget.
So none of that's been spent yet?
Yep.
And then, how are you going to manage the use? And then, how are you gonna manage the use of the charging station?
It's, at this point, it'll be free of charge, so just kind of first-come, first-served. There's two ports on it, so it'll be for two, up to two cars at a time. You know, we'll probably have, we'll look at policies and procedures, I guess, on it. We haven't gotten that far, but it'll be open for free to the public and first-come, first-served.
In perpetu- in perpetua-
I think we'll continue looking at that. We potentially may start charging, I guess, if need be.
I'm just curious what it's gonna cost down the road and where the, you know, where that's gonna get budgeted, if it's not gonna be in their budget.
What's an incremental cost to the utilities that, at the rec center? I don't know if we've estimated those costs yet, but...
Yeah, it was part of, as part of the grant application, they estimated the cost, you know, pennies. It's very minimal to operate a charging station.
Including the cost of electricity.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Ms. Doosman.
Yes, thank you. So can you just kind of touch on some of the communications and engagement tactics that you guys use?
Go ahead.
Well, you've probably seen us in the Connections newsletter, and we've been working with Sarah Spalding on getting messaging out via social media as well by providing her information to post. You've probably seen the Green Business Award being promoted that way as well. Mayor Matters, we provide some things for that as well. And we are interacting with the community at events quite a bit. We have T-shirts. As you can see, we're sporting them today, so that's part of it as well. And just talking with everybody at the events. We have a banner that designates our table, and we're able to share with residents.
So something that I just want you guys to maybe take into consideration is that a lot of the schools in our area are ripe for this kind of work. And I know at Peak, we have talked about a community garden, and we talk about sustainability quite a bit. And so I don't know if, and I know a lot of the PTA leaders at the other local schools, and I think that we would love to be able to connect with you and bring you into the classroom and talk about sustainability with the kiddos and kind of have them see it, you know, in real time, because I think that that would be really important. And I am going to be conducting some neighborhood pop-up cleanup days in the next couple of months. And we've talked, and I actually already did this with our students at Peak. They had leaders, little leaders, and several of the days consisted of us going around our campus and picking up trash and talking about proper disposal of certain items. And so I definitely want to encourage you guys, and I would love to touch base with you and hope that we could maybe engage our young, our youth, please.
Right now, we're kind of on an as-request basis rather than us reaching out to organizations. And in fact, I was at the Rotary Club today, just giving a spiel. So I would absolutely welcome that, and we would love all of the invitations to wherever the community might need us, absolutely.
Mr. Matthews.
What was your 2019 budget?
It was the same.
Thank you. Can you speak a little bit and give us a little information on the Sustainable Neighborhoods program?
So the Sustainable Neighborhoods program was developed by the City of Lakewood. They certify and train leaders to really engage citizens in designing their own programming. So the community liaison, someone who would be a sustainability coordinator with the city, for example, would be doing outreach to neighborhoods, and the neighborhoods would be self-defined. They would come to the coordinator and say, hey, we would like to identify as a sustainable neighborhood, and here are the projects that we have in mind. Then, as those projects are implemented, the neighborhood receives points, if you will, and greater certification in the program. And they receive a nice plaque that identifies them as a sustainable neighborhood. It's been very engaging in the communities where it's been implemented right now. Citizens are, you know, really enthusiastic and excited about being able to have control over the projects that their own neighborhoods are doing. I think it fits in with the NRS that we're reviewing right now in that it, you know, really gives neighborhoods the power to implement the programs as needed.
Thank you. Any further questions for Sustainable Wheat Ridge? Do you want to make a consensus?
Yeah, thanks a lot for you guys for all the work that you do, and I know that you have eleven people on your committee, and you guys spend a lot of volunteer time trying to get this stuff to work. And so I would like to ask for a consensus to add twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars to the 2020 budget for the Sustainable Wheat Ridge.
Okay, we have consensus?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for a great presentation. Appreciate it and the work you do. Okay, let's see. We've got number, number three on our, let's see. Number four on our list is Local Works 2020 Budget.
Now, how do I work this thing?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council. My name is Ashley Holland, and I'm the Marketing and Events Coordinator at Local Works. It's my pleasure to speak on behalf of the rest of the staff, our board, and our amazing volunteers. Tonight, our staff is here. We have Carolyn Doran, our Events Manager, Jenny Snell, our Program Coordinator, and Malachi Goodman, our Office Manager. We also have our Board President, Kelsey Robb, and will be available after the presentation to answer any questions that you have. As you're well aware, Local Works is a nonprofit advancing Wheat Ridge as a vibrant and sustainable community. In partnership with the City of Wheat Ridge, we offer programming that connects the community, attracts new and prospective residents, business owners and visitors, and celebrates the unique charm of Wheat Ridge, all with the intention of promoting a healthy economy as well as ensuring the overall health and vitality of its citizens and community. We will host between forty and fifty events this year, and we will reach an estimated twenty-six thousand people with our programs and services. With a staff of four, we simply could not do it without the support of our volunteers, our partners, and of course, the City of Wheat Ridge. We hope to demonstrate this evening how Local Works has been a good steward of the generous funding granted by council. Our partnership with the city is instrumental in our success. The first area we're gonna talk about is the Wheat Ridge Special Events, and we're asking for one-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. We are perhaps best known for our Ridge at Thirty-Eight events. These events are meant to activate Thirty-Eighth Avenue by attracting people to Wheat Ridge's Main Street while engaging and connecting businesses, residents, and the community. Many of the food establishments see an increase of sales during these events. As we've heard from Colorado Plus, overall, your events have a positive impact on business. We always see an increase on business on event days. Local Works is broadening our focus to include all of Wheat Ridge. We've begun to hold small events throughout Wheat Ridge, and in 2020, we will be exploring additional events and alternative venues along our commercial corridors. You're probably aware of our Big Five events: Criterium and Brew Fest, Friday Night Live, Ridge Fest, Trunk or Treat, and Holiday Celebration. And here are some highlights from this year. The Criterium and Brew Fest was once again our state championships, and we presented a new course with resounding success. This year, we partnered with twenty-five Wheat Ridge businesses, either through sponsorships or vendors. I'm proud to report Local Works earned thirty-five thousand four hundred and sixty-three dollars in beer ticket sales, registrations, vendor fees, and sponsorships, making this our highest-growing grossing Criterium and Brew Fest to date. And we look forward to 2020's seventh annual event. Ridge Fest is scheduled for September seventh, coming up. Hopefully, we'll see many of you there. And as in years past, we'll feature bluegrass music, classic cars, an artisan market, field day games, and the return of the highly popular Chalk Art Festival in partnership with the Wheat Ridge Cultural Commission. We will partner with twenty-nine Wheat Ridge businesses for Ridge Fest. We anticipate over seven thousand attendees again this year. Trunk or Treat will take place on October twenty-sixth. Businesses and community members decorate their car trunks and pass out candy to trick-or-treaters. And due to the popularity of this event, we're actually relocating it to the Lutheran Medical Center, and we're very excited about this partnership. We will present our eighth annual holiday celebration on December seventh, and this also serves as the official tree lighting for the city. Last year, we partnered with twelve businesses who all contributed to the event's success. Eight of these businesses opened their retail space. As partners in the event, the businesses showed their commitment to the community while also promoting their products and services to the forty-five hundred attendees. Next up are our home and business loans. We're asking for fifty thousand dollars. The goal of the loan program is to improve the economic vitality and appearance of the homes and businesses in Wheat Ridge. We currently have four business loans in progress and paperwork for one home loan that's currently processing. In mid-2019, some of the previous loans reached maturity. These funds will continue to be cycled back into the program for future applicants. However, new applicants come in faster than existing loans are paid off. Therefore, we still request city funding for this program, and Local Works Board of Directors will match these funds with an additional fifty thousand dollars. Next up is Live Local Wheat Ridge. We're asking for forty-one thousand five hundred. Live Local is a program that continues to connect residents with one another and to local businesses to build a stronger community. These events provide really unique opportunities for local businesses to reach new and existing customers. Run by a volunteer-driven committee, our 2019 events cover topics ranging from fermented foods to archery classes, most recently, a tour of Fife Ridge's farm. These multi-generational events have had record attendance this year, with most being sold out. Year-to-date, we've collaborated with eleven local businesses and community groups, including the Everett Parent Teacher Association, Rocky Mountain Specialty Gear, and Southwest Gardens. For 2020, we will continue to grow and evolve this program. Community outreach and education, there's several items that fall within this, and the largest being our Leadership Academy. We're asking for forty thousand dollars overall. Local Works added more than twenty graduates to Wheaties Academy in 2018 and is planning to coordinate a comparable leadership program in 2020. Our leadership program provides dedicated community members with the skills to turn ideas into action. The 2018 Wheaties tackled local issues, including improved communication between government and residents, promoting a vibrant economy via business partnerships, increased options for affordable housing, and community art. The past participants remain very engaged citizens, and fifteen program alumni sit or have sat on city boards, commissions, and council. This year, our planning committee is already working hard preparing for next year's academy, including surveying past participants, updating our curriculum, and securing session locations and speakers. Also within this line item is our Partners in Progress Committee. We're working to educate residents about civic engagement and inspire them to get involved in the community. This committee is working to create a pipeline of civic engagement with options for all residents. Also under this broader umbrella lives our involvement with Art Space, Wheat Ridge's Complete Count Committee, Sustainable Wheat Ridge, and other community initiatives as they arise. Next, we have our Community Marketing and Positioning Tours. We're asking for twenty-two thousand five hundred. In the past year, we've conducted two very successful tours that have showcased amazing local businesses. Our Progressive Dinner Tour took participants to four locations across Wheat Ridge. These businesses partnered with others, and ultimately, our tourgoers experienced food and drinks from seven local establishments. This spring, we held our Blooms and Brunch Tour. This sold-out tour took participants to Wheat Ridge's four garden centers, and at each stop, participants enjoyed food from local restaurants. And overall, attendees interacted with nine local businesses. We also interviewed, or surveyed tourgoers afterwards, and of our respondents, a hundred percent said they plan on making future purchases at one or more of the garden centers and food providers. And fifty percent of respondents said that they spent seventy-five dollars or more that day alone. Following the success of these tours, we plan to perfect our existing tours and continue implementing new and exciting tours. TLC Wheat Ridge, thirty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty. TLC stands for Traffic Safety, Life Quality, and Crime Reduction. This is a partnership with the Police Department's Community Services Team, and we have three programs that fall under TLC: Cleanup Days, Dumpster Grants, and Block Party Grants. We host four Cleanup Days throughout the summer where citizens can dump trash, recycling, and yard waste, and we recently collaborated with Altitude DocuShred and now offer document shredding at some of these events. Last year, we hauled away one-thousand three hundred and twenty cubic yards of waste, and we are set to exceed that number this year. We also have two neighborhood-specific grant opportunities. Our dumpster grants allow residents to work alongside their neighbors to clean up the block and bring homes into code compliance. And our Block Party Grants help subsidize the cost of getting neighbors together. Neighborhoods are well-connected. Neighborhoods that are well-connected are safer and cleaner. As of right now, we have seventeen dumpster grants and twelve Block Party Grants that we've awarded this year. Next up, Heal and Active Living Coalition Plan Support. Local Works is in year three of an Active Living Grant from Kaiser Permanente. The grant focuses on improving infrastructure west of Kipling on Thirty-Eighth Avenue and extending back to those surrounding neighborhoods. The goal is to reduce barriers to walking, biking, and wheelchair-rolling. After the first full year of the grant, the core team of consultants and advisors made recommendations to the city based on resident feedback and our data collection, and the city moved ahead with purchasing some equipment to be used along the corridor, including a permanent speed checker, increased lighting, and improved wheelchair access to bus stops. Public Works will be installing these this year. Local Works is also supporting the ongoing work of the Wheat Ridge Heal Program, which is, purpose is to inform the community on matters pertaining to healthy eating and active living, focusing on heart health, active living, healthy harvest, and mental health. And in 2020, Local Works would like to continue this important community health work. Community Engagement and Communications, we're asking for fifty thousand dollars. We help position Wheat Ridge as a community of choice and provide support for the City of Wheat Ridge priorities like facilitating neighbor-to-neighbor relations. One of our most popular means of communication is our event postcard. These continue to be well-received in the community, and in spring 2019, we started providing a Spanish-language version of the postcard. We plan to continue this method in 2020. We also deliver school flyers to all Jeffco schools in Wheat Ridge. And this year, we've added nearby schools that serve Wheat Ridge families and private schools in our community. In addition, our Community Engagement Committee is focused on outreach and relationship building. One way the committee accomplishes this goal is with Local Works open houses. And these events provide space for neighbors to get to know one another and, again, engage with local businesses. In 2018, our open house highlighted the businesses in the West Twenty-Ninth Marketplace, and we included the participation of four businesses. And then, just last week, we focused on businesses on or around Forty-Fourth Avenue, and we highlighted six local businesses. And then, finally, our Commercial Corridors Program. We're asking for ninety-three thousand dollars. Based on our observations and conversations with businesses and community members, Local Works is broadening our focus to all Wheat Ridge commercial corridors. We will continue with our branding and placemaking efforts on Ridge at Thirty-Eight, and will also join in on these efforts in other areas. There are existing business and civic leaders along our commercial corridors, and we plan to collaborate with these individuals. We'll work with leaders to develop and implement branding plans for these areas. These funds will also go towards marketing the placemaking events in these areas. Overall, we'll continue to use our marketing tools to engage patrons to choose businesses throughout Wheat Ridge when shopping and dining. And finally, we have a map of the locations of all of our 2019 programs and events. And as you can see, we're already reaching much of Wheat Ridge, and will continue this work in 2020. So on the behalf of the staff, board, and volunteers, thank you, council members, for your investment in Local Works. By investing in Local Works, you're investing in Wheat Ridge.
Thank you, Ms. Holland, very much. Open it up to questions from council. Ms. Doosman.
Yes, thank you. So I kind of wanted to touch on the twenty-two thousand five hundred dollars for the two positioning tours. What would you say is the largest cost? I saw that there was ten thousand dollars for volunteers and staff time, but I'm just, I'm having a really hard time wrapping my head around that amount of money for just two tours.
Sure. And so, and you can see that we didn't spend quite that much this year, but we're... A lot of that depends on the tour. So for the Progressive Dinner Tour, it was a bus tour, so renting a bus. We paid for all of the food. We don't want to make-
We don't want to make... Working on our programs and being a business partner, something that's cost-prohibitive to our businesses in the area, and so, you know, often, we pay cost for food and supplies and time for these organizations so that we can highlight their awesome businesses, but that doesn't become something that hurts their bottom line.
So when you're citing personnel and volunteer management, because you also have the refreshment supplies and other costs in there, is $2,000. So what would you say that that $10,000 for personnel and volunteer cover?
Oh, yeah, that's for Local Works staff of coordinating these. These are definitely very time-intensive things to coordinate, working with, you know, nine or 11 or however many businesses on these events. It's a lot of running around.
I have more unless other people. Go ahead, Kristi.
Ms. Davis, we'll come back.
So I have just a couple of questions you might be able to answer and staff might be able to answer. So I know there's been a bit of a transition with staffing, and one of my questions is that from a staffing perspective or even a budget perspective, because you have that vacancy, I guess it's... Is it one of those things that, Patrick, then, we're not providing dollars to them? Or, you know, that you're not asking for those? Again, it kind of goes back to, are we writing checks and, you know, actually, the need's not there if your staffing's down or those types of things? So I just... How is the money's like... And again, one of the other things was, you know, we're going to ramp up on the bus tours this year, but let's say, for whatever reason, maybe you missed one this year. Those dollars, then, I'm guessing, aren't spent, so then, do they just stay in the city?
Yes. If we don't fulfill an obligation, we don't, you know, host an event that we were planning on, that we don't invoice for.
What about staffing?
Same with staffing, yeah.
Okay. And then, I just have a general comment. You know, first of all, thank you for all you guys do. I know there's a lot of volunteer work. I think the hardest thing I have to kind of, to say approve it or not, it's hard when we don't see the overall budget, because this is more or less looking at give or take. I mean, it's $80,000, so 18% increase in budget, and I don't know many people who are at least are working at their business budget or home budget that could say, oh, let's just increase our spending by 18%. You know, so I think although maybe some good ideas, maybe some good areas, some good thoughts, from a budget perspective, when I haven't seen the whole budget for the city, although it'd be nice to spend $50,000 on community engagement and communications, we might need to work on some sidewalks or something instead. So it's a lofty request, 18% from the previous year. Not to discount the work, but I think that it's hard to kind of approve it without knowing what other things we might have to take away for these requests.
Thank you.
I thank you. I'm Carolyn Doran. I'm the Event Manager at Local Works, and I want to explain a little bit about the 18%. We went through each of these items, and they're not all 18%. I know the event, the special event, is 18%, and that was based on about a, I think we said, about a $30,000 increase. $10,000 of that is general event cost increase, you know, increases. For example, our staging's gone, everything's gone up. The $20,000 would be, as we're looking at expanding, doing events in other corridors, we'd like to be able to present other events, like films on 44th and different parks and that kind of thing. If we don't do that, we would not invoice the city for that.
But that's not in your 190 special events, because I did look there, because I know she mentioned, oh, and we're going to look at other corridors, but there was nothing of growth in other corridors, $15,000 or something. So that 190 you have in special events is just business as usual.
Well, it isn't, because 20 of that is growth in other corridors.
Yeah, we don't have it split out in, like, between our normal events and, you know, new added events. That's just, the 190 is for all of it, but as Carolyn...
Right, but you kind of broke it out, Criterion, Friday Night Live, Ridge Fest. So it's not like, you know, $15,000 more to come, so a lot of it is broken down by each event to equal 190.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Do you see what I'm saying? So it's not saying, oh, we're going to do films on 44th or something like that. That 190 isn't even including that potential growth.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. And that is, though, how we were seeing that, is that that $20,000 would be growth in other corridors.
That's not how it's written on here.
Additional questions? Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There was an indication that there'd be some working with Sustainable Wheat Ridge and other efforts to do communication. Can you explain what that nexus would be and what that connection would be with Sustainable Wheat Ridge?
Sure. So Sustainable Wheat Ridge, I don't know off the top... I mean, I know this year, we worked with them a lot. I serve on the Partners in Energy Committee, working with the businesses, so we've incorporated them in several events. We had a Ridge at 38 community meeting recently, and so that, you know... And those are kind of smaller things within that line item, but that would include my work on committees. I'm also on the Complete Count Committee for Wheat Ridge, and then, you know, just a little bit of room for whatever else comes up next year. We don't know yet.
Thank you. And I would just caution us here, because as we look at these different requests, we have some engagement and community outreach within the Sustainable Wheat Ridge budget. We have engagement and community outreach within the Local Works budget. We have engagement and community outreach proposed for the NRS strategy. So we have what seems to be a legion of community engagement, and so I just want to make sure that we are coordinating these, so when residents get a knock on their door, they say, hi, I'm from the city of Wheat Ridge. Well, they just left, and so I just want to make sure we're not sort of stepping over ourselves as we're running up to the citizen's doorstep, and so that isn't necessarily for Local Works in general, but it is across the board. I want to make sure we're coordinated on this and not sending multiple of y'all to do the same job.
Thank you, Mr. Keeter.
So just to follow up on another question, it seems clearly that the staff salaries are split out by task and not a separate line item here. Does this budget request include for the new executive director?
It does.
Okay, I thought so. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman?
That cued me up for my next question. Where are we at with the new executive director? Could you tell us about that process?
I would be happy to. Kelsey Robb, President of Local Works. So we are nearing the final stages of that search. I would expect that we can make an announcement within the next two weeks in order to maintain the confidentiality of those who have applied and may not have heard yet one way or the other. I want to respect them in that and not tell whoever's listening, but I would expect within the next two weeks, we've had an extensive search process. We hired a consultant to come in and help us with the search because we wanted to make sure that we got the absolute best candidate possible. We had 20 applicants, which is more than the last time we went through this search. We were very excited about the pool of applicants, and I'm very much looking forward to making the announcement.
Thank you. Mr. Matthews?
Are we keeping a budget somewhere of the in-kind support? Does that come up in our general budget? Any... You know, at one time, I know it got kind of buried somewhere, but...
I'm sorry, I didn't catch up first.
The in-kind support?
From the city.
From the city?
For Local Works itself? There really isn't any kind... You know, I think when we had that discussion a couple of years ago, some staff has volunteered for some of their events, but we don't keep a separate in-kind budget, no.
Not even as a line item? So we don't know how much we spend putting up banners and taking stuff down and...
The Public Works Department does help, yeah, with banners, but it's just part of their programming. We don't have a separate line item for it, no, we don't. If that's something council wants in the future, we can do that, but we don't track that separately.
I thought we'd asked for it some, about four years ago, but it's just my memory.
Ms. Hoppe?
I think that we did look at how much we were supporting different events through in-kind of like the police staff and the public works staff and stuff like that, and had, I believe, last year, actually, around budget season, had come up and had looked at that, but that was when we were looking at the budget as a whole, then you guys as staff had come up. We had asked, like, how much are we spending in overtime and police and public works to put the barriers out and pick them up for parades and stuff like that? And so I know that that was done last year, but it was further in the process when we were looking at the budget during study session.
Yeah, when we bring the budget back in September, we can try to put some numbers together. It's fairly negligible, though. I don't... I'm trying to think what... Yeah, we put banners up, but, you know, it's not just for Local Works, that's for all city events, and, you know, we support the Christmas holiday lighting ceremony, but we can see what numbers we can pull together for the budget on that.
Additional questions or... Ms. Hoppe?
Sure. I'll take a stab at a consensus. I'd like to ask for a consensus for... To fund Local Works 2020 budget request at $550,750.
Okay, that doesn't look like it. There are four, okay, so we're at half, we're halfway. I don't know that that... That's not really much of a consensus. Do you want to try for something else?
So I guess I would just ask that the ones who didn't want to make... Who didn't want to consent to that, if they have a different number in mind, or I can take another stab at it. I'd like to ask for a consensus for $525,000 for the Local Works 2020 program budget for next year. Oh, come on, you guys, then you guys come up with the number.
I just, I guess I'm having a hard time, because, you know, before Wheat Ridge 2020 rebranded as Local Works, their goal was to be a self-sustaining entity, and I really appreciate their work in the community. I like the events. I completely agree that trunk-or-treat has outgrown the green. We actually didn't go last year because the year before, it was just really hard to corral two young children for that length of time and with people running out of candy, and it was, you know, it was hard. But I think, like, Kelsey and I have had a lot of conversations around specific issues on my end, and I don't want to project that into this conversation as far as like my personal bias, but at the same time, I don't know the number that I'm thinking of, but I also... And so I don't know where I would take away from, but I just... I don't feel like this is taking into consideration, like, I see the in-kind and everything, and just from managing the Carnation Festival and doing the work that we do there, one thing that I would recommend, and it has come up amongst the Carnation Festival Board, is that it might be cost-effective for the city or Local Works and the Carnation Festival to partner together for tent rentals and facility rentals, and we would come into an issue with where would we store it, but I think that tent rentals, that makes up a lot of our costs for events, and so I don't know if we can maybe partner in that and drive down the cost by purchasing our own as opposed to renting them for several events and whatnot. So that's something that I would maybe want to look at, and I guess I'm having a really hard time with the high cost of like a couple of events, and it doesn't sound like Wheaties Academy is going to be continuing in the same manner unless... Because I just saw the comparable leadership.
Absolutely. It will most likely be under a different brand, but it's same concept, same everything. So one of our core tenets of what we do is making sure that we have leaders in the pipeline for the city of Wheat Ridge, making sure that we are providing the opportunity and the resources that people need in order to engage better with their city, whether that's coming to speak with city council, whether that is learning how to get onto a board or commission, learning how to run for council, learning how to connect with your city council members, trying to figure out which district you're in, whatever that is. We're here to help with that, and that Leadership Academy is absolutely, it's coming up next year. I would encourage all of you to encourage all of your friends to join us. We're already in the process of figuring out our speakers and our event locations and everything. It just might be called something different. We're working on what that looks like.
Ms. Dozeman?
So I just have another question, because I had been a part of the Activate 38 Plan with the Kaiser Grant, and that kind of seemed to have fizzled as well. I just, I don't know where we're at directly with that, like, if you're still talking about infrastructure improvements west of Kipling on 38th Avenue? Glad to see you back, by the way.
Thank you. Thanks. So, yeah, I can answer a little bit of that. I can talk about what I knew from before when I was Activate 38 Coordinator, and since I've been back and noticing what we've been trying to get done during that time. We are in year three, wraps up next March. What we've done during this time is basically we have used contractors to take as many samples and opinions as that we can of the community along that corridor, not just on 38th, but all the neighborhoods surrounding that area. It's a very different beast than 38th Avenue on the other side of Wad's. So it's quite different, but folks still have to walk and bike and get to the bus and get to the store and things like that. So to answer your question, some of the things that we've done is we have compiled a lot of data from talking to a lot of folks and made recommendations to the city. I did find out while I was gone that some of the recommendations that we made have moved forward, and the city Public Works is going to be installing those hopefully by the end of the summer or moving into fall. School has just started, but we've got a mobile speed checker that will actually... It's not going to be mobile, it will be staying there. It will also have some crosswalks, some active beacon crosswalks, and improved access to bus stops for folks who are in wheelchairs or for strollers and things like that. So we also have programmed fall events with each of the schools that are along the corridor or right there at the beginning there at Everett. So those... That programming will happen later this fall and October, and that'll be things like walking safety, bike safety, and really, like, taking kids and making sure that they're being safe and they know the rules of the road and things like that. So that's, hopefully, answers a little bit of your question on what we've done with that.
Thank you. Ms. Hoppe?
Yeah, you know, I just would... I'd like to just mention that at no point in time have I ever known Local Works or Wheat Ridge 2020 to be in a position to be 100% self-sustaining because they don't charge for their events. And so while when I was on the board, one of our goals was to constantly look for other funding resources besides just the city, but to be self-sustaining and not charge for their events is not... It's just not likely. I mean, they would have to charge covers at all of the events, and the point of the events is to make sure that our community is able to come and enjoy, you know, in free spaces, and so I just kind of wanted to mention that. And, you know, and so I just, I guess my question is, you know, for those who didn't like one of the two first consensuses, is if you have a suggestion, I would ask that you please make the suggestion and ask for a consensus.
I'll go to Mr. Pond.
Thank you. We always have a good discussion about this, so this is not new. One way that I look at this, and I appreciate the presentation and as well as the information in the packet, so thank you, because if I look at these things as they're broken down in this package, I look at every one of these things and affirmatively say that, yes, I want that, I want... I think that we should have that, I think that we should buy that, get that somehow. That, you know, the how in this case is through, you know, through this relationship and its evolution, but the things that we're doing and the penetration that we're having in our community, I think, is very important. Now, could I nitpick this a little bit and maybe see some things, you know, to trim off of this shore, you know, going from 550 to 525? But I... To try to get too far... But I, to try to, to try to get too far down in here, I think, you know, I think as long as we're willing to have that, I mean, I'm willing to have that conversation, but I think you need to be willing to be honest about it, too. Like, these things are important. Engaging, having these events, continuing to support our businesses, our residents through these programs are very important. And so we should be making sure that we're, and I, I hope that's what the discussion is, that we're efficiently and effectively, you know, buying these things, because I think every one of them, as I look at them in this list, you know, I'm not, I can't argue with them, I think they're important, they've affected my life in a positive way, and my family's life in a positive way, my community in a positive way, and that's what I think is the most important outcome. So we can talk about it a lot more, a little more, that's fine, but let's, I think, let's come back and, and let's not quibble about the fact that these things are important and get to, like, what's the efficient way of doing it? And I don't know what that number is, I agree with, with Ms. Hoppy, that we should kind of try to take a stab at it.
Mr. Keter?
I guess, building on that, and while I appreciate Ms. Hoppy's attempt to, to find a number, if, if we're going to approve something that's less than what they say, we should be identifying specific things that they're working on that we don't think they need to do, or at least stand up to say, you need to tighten your belt on the events or on this portion or that, so that if, as they're out there, if people say, well, you know, this year's Ridge Fest isn't as good as last year, that, that we're acknowledging that that's on us, that we've made a decision to not fund it to the extent that they thought it needed. And so I would, I would push it to the, to what are the line items? What are the things that we think are less important and therefore maybe not deserving of the same amount of funding?
Ms. Weaver?
I'm, I'm going to tell my Local Works story. I, I just, I think, I think Local Works is really indispensable for this community in so many ways. It was the thing that started engaging me with this community. And so I think for a lot of our newer residents in the last 10 years, it's what has brought them into the process, and I think that's super, super important with all of the fun activities. And I know, you know, just to connect this to everything we've been doing tonight, right, this is, this is the process that brings people in with listening and all of these different things to get to this fun place, right? And I, I, but I also agree with some of the things that have been said around, you know, we've got a lot of different things happening in Wheat Ridge that are very cool and very worth funding, but is there some overlap? So I guess my question in this is, I, I don't have a problem with funding at the, at the level they've asked. I would like, and since I'm new to council, I'm not sure how many times you all come in, but I, I would like to request that, that, that if I'm, if I'm going to support this amount, that there be some work done on sort of the crossover of, you know, where does Local Works then sort of go into the Sustainability Committee, go into the, the other things that are being funded, or, or, you know, like Ms. Dozeman suggested, some of the crossover of, of saving money? And is there a, a quarterly check-in or something around moving towards? Because I, I would say, my, my one criticism is that, that these things seem very separate. If I, if I take away, if I just look at my evolution through moving to Wheat Ridge, getting involved, the transition to the different things wasn't necessarily connected for me, if that makes sense. Not that that's anybody's job, but, but I think that's something that we could definitely probably save some money on and make everything a little bit flow, make it a little bit more family-like, right? I'm excited about this, I want to get involved with the Wheat, with the Carnation Festival. I'm excited about this, I really want to be involved with Planning Commission, whatever it is. I don't know if that makes any sense, but that would be my request in supporting that amount, is, is to kind of listen to some of the suggestions made.
Ms. Davis?
You don't mind, right? So I guess my, my thought is, is this discussion and my thoughts is not that I don't appreciate Local Works, that I don't appreciate the work, that the events I don't attend and enjoy and realize that also our community does as well. I, I think it's, and I stand corrected, it wasn't 18%, it was a little shy of 15% increase. That's my issue, and I also, from what Mr. Cutter was saying early, Keter was, Keter was saying earlier, sorry, it's getting late, is that I'm not the expert in this area to know where maybe changes can be made. So, you know, just like me with my budget at work with that, it's, it's, to me, it's how do you make it work staying fairly budget neutral? And if you're not budget neutral, are there things, you know, can you explore sponsorships? And those types of things, yeah, grants, yeah, no, it's not necessarily to charge people when they go get their picture with Santa or anything like that, but are there ways that we can pull in extra funds that might support some of this? But, you know, when I see digital media support doubling, again, those are areas, I can't make that decision, I don't know what your vision of that digital media, media support was going to be to have it double, but my, I guess my request is, at least at this point, is that it stay fairly budget neutral, because we do have a lot. We've, we're looking at two coordinators and, you know, we're looking at some other projects, and just to be 15% above budget, just, you know, at the first swipe, I honestly, just like all of us are probably told at work, you know, go back and try to see, see what you can do. So that would be my request, go back and see what you can do, because I think 15% is a big ask.
Would you like to respond to that?
Yes, thank you.
Please.
Every event we do, we try to increase our sponsorships, and we have increased our sponsorships, but as you can see, events are expensive. So we have been working on that, we're always looking for grants, we are, you know, we get, earn income through beer ticket sales, vendor fees, all of those things to help offset some of those costs, but events are expensive. And I guess the other thing I just wanted to mention is on the digital media support, we did double that, and our, our vision there is to work with 44th Avenue businesses and work on that website, make it more robust, attractive, get more businesses involved. So that is what our vision was on that.
Thank you. Ms. Dozeman?
Thank you. So I just, I'm kind of crunching the numbers, and the 2019 adopted budget was $490,500, and the 2019 estimated was $479,763. So that's a $10,000 difference, or that, that wasn't spent from last year, and the budget increase or ask for this year is $60,250. And so I just, I'm not sure where, where, like, how to justify that kind of a jump in, in some of the things that I just have know, or know have occurred in the last year and everything. So I just, I don't know necessarily if I want to keep it the same as last year and, or, or slightly raise it, but, yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm not coming to 550,000.
Mr. Urban?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we go through this, we can all kind of look at and say, I like this, I don't like that, and come up with an answer as to what we want or what we don't want. And we can each ascribe values to what we like and what we don't like. For myself specifically, as it relates to the marketing and positioning tours, I have no earthly idea why we continue to do that, and what metric or how do we determine whether it was a successful bus ride or not? So do we have any kind of way to ascertain the benefit of spending $22,000 to bus people around?
Sure. So we did do a survey after the event, which had, you know, a couple of things in my presentation that I talked about, but, you know, that is about showcasing our businesses, and so the Blooms and Brunch was a great example of that with nine local businesses participating. I do also want to mention that this year is also a year that we have mid-mod, so we didn't really include that in, in this discussion, because it won't be part of next year, and that's why next year we'll have more smaller level tours throughout the city. But this year, a large amount of that budget item is going to our Mid-Century and Modern Home Tour, which will bring in about 350 people to Wheat Ridge. It sold out in 2017, and with the numbers we have right now with tickets, it's certainly going to sell out this year.
Yes, but that's the point, like, why, why are we doing it? What's the benefit?
I mean, I, I see value in it for our businesses, so the mid-mod tour, we have a great partnership with Mod Mood, which is an amazing business in this community. We have partnerships with Bardo, First Bank, Remax Professionals, could probably talk to more of them. And I think it shows how amazing our community is. It's one example that makes Wheat Ridge really unique. There's other, you know, areas in the Denver metro area that have great Mid-Century and Modern Homes, but I think it's, it's a real draw from people across the state. In 2017, we had people from as far away as Colorado Springs, Boulder, Breckenridge come in to check out our community and spend some time and money here.
Thank you. And so I, I would just, if we're asking for a specific ask, I would say that the $22,500 for the marketing and positioning tours and the $50,000 for community engagement and communications would be two areas I could see that we could work with, but again, I'm not Local Works, so it, I, I would ask us to look at putting a dollar figure on what we had last year and going from there. So can I make a consensus to accept the?
Good. I've got one more, one more speaker would like to.
Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Matthews?
Thank you. I have two questions here, is when, one, number one is, when are you going to post your 2018 Form 990?
So that, our budget was, or our, no, okay, can you speak to that? I think it was just completed, but we haven't gotten our final audit yet.
We just received the draft, hello, we just received the draft of the 2018 990, and we still have our Board of Directors to overlook it, and once they do overlook it, they sign off on it, then it'll be final, and it'll be posted for your viewing.
Okay, thank you. One of, one of the items here that makes me somewhat uncomfortable is really only looking at a part of their business, and, and we never see what's going on, on the backside. So I have a question here about the 2017 990. It shows your total revenues at $665,000 and your total expenses at $561,000 with a surplus of $104,000. Is that correct?
I, I don't, I can't comment, comment on that specifically, I'd have to go back and look at that, but I believe that was one of the years that we sold one of the town homes that we previously owned with the original model of Wheat Ridge 2020. We had bought properties and rehabbed them, and so in order to put great houses back on the market that were of a more reasonable price point than some people can, you know, some, some more people can afford, we actually sold one of those town homes, I believe that's that. I can't, can't say for certain, I'd have to take a look, but I think that's the.
Okay, that's what I'm saying, that I, I don't know where their total really financial balance statement is, because we only see parts and pieces. In 2017, your total assets were $1,449. Is that gone up? Has it gone down? And how does that affect your financial statement in general?
I can certainly have our Board Treasurer get back to you on all of those questions. I'm not an expert in finance, so I can't answer that question for you right now. That's why we have a Board of Directors, and that's why we have an entire Finance Council that gets together and looks at those down to the penny. I can certainly have our Treasurer get back to you with all of those questions. And yes, as far as the audit goes, we have a board meeting actually tomorrow morning, 7:30 a.m. Hopefully, we'll all be rearing to go, at which point I believe we're going to be seeing the draft, and at which point we can most likely approve it.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Hoppy?
I, I just would like to, I know Mr. Urban's wanting to make a consensus here, so I'll let him do that and not cut him off with it, but I just want to have everybody keep in mind that if, if, I, I have to disagree with, with David there, because if we are cutting money out of their request, then I think that they should pick where that money comes from, because, you know, sometimes they might be able to wheel a different deal for a special event or something like that. So I would just say, if it's not for the full amount that Mr. Urban's getting ready to make, then I would hope that there wouldn't be any requests to not do specific things and just have them tighten their own belt.
Certainly. I'd like to make a consensus that we move forward with a proposed budget for Local Works in the amount of $490,500.
One, two, three, four. So that doesn't, that doesn't really get a consensus. Ms. Hoppy?
I'd like to try, the 2019 adopted budget of $490,500 plus 5%, which would be a total of $515,025, and keeping in mind that what, that this is a reimbursement program, so it's not like we're writing them a check for this, it means if they're not producing the events and the, and the stuff in our community, then they're not getting paid for those, and so I'd like to give them the opportunity to do the extra work on the other corridors in our community and put a little extra focus on some of our other businesses, and I'd like to give them 5% bump over last year's to do that.
What was the total number?
515. Last year's adopted, 490, 500 plus 5% is 51525.
Okay.
I'd like to ask for a consensus.
Okay, so a consensus on 515025. Four, five. So we've got a consensus there. That sound all right? Okay. Local Works, I'd like to thank you all for coming in. You've got not all that you asked for, but, but hopefully we look forward to seeing all of your events in town and a very successful year, so thank you so much. Okay, we will go back to item number one, the Wheat Ridge Business District 2020 budget. Ms. Hoppy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Unfortunately, Mr. Demont couldn't be with us tonight, why we had the pedits for the Carnation Festival, and you get me for the Wheat Ridge Business District. I am appointed by City Council to sit on that board, I've been on that board since Our request for 2020 funding is $45,000 for our regular grant programs, which has been our request in, in the years past, and then our facade plus programs have been extremely successful, and so we'd like to continue that on with the $45,000 for the facade plus programs. I handed out a packet that gives you some before and after pictures on some of the projects we do. Some of it is facade, some of it is signage, pole conversion signs to.
Ground monuments.
Monument signs, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The ADA accessibility grants are a big one, and so these, what, what had happened in the past is that typically the Wheat Ridge Business District would get $90,000 each year, and what had happened is we weren't getting the requests for the grants, so we, because we weren't spending the money, we stopped asking for that much, and that's when we started asking for the $45,000 for the regular grants. Then we came up with a new grant program, which is the facade plus grants program, and you'll see Posto Call, which is also to Lair, I think, right now, is one of the people who got a facade plus program. Raphael's Hair on 44th is someone who got a facade plus program, and actually Raphael's, which I think is at the back of your photo packet, was a massive transformation. Was it, yeah, it's the very last page, so you flipped the packet all the way over, it was a massive transformation, it's a beautiful building now. So anyways, so we are asking for 2020 budget of $90,000 total.
Questions from Council. Mr. Matthews?
I have a little bit of a question here, and he gets back to. I have a little bit of a question here, and it gets back to kind of keeping track of metrics and the values of what we're doing. And it's, which came first, the chicken or the egg type of question? You're presenting this like any good salesman would, that if you hadn't had these grants, none of that $600,000 would have been spent. And my question is, is for the majority of our grants, what have you, if someone's willing, if someone's already made up their mind to improve their facade, and then they say, oh, by the way, if I go over here, I can get $10,000, so I might as well do that, why not? It's there for the, it's the low-hanging fruit. And how, and how do you determine where you're driving the decision to improve a facade rather than someone taking advantage of the low-hanging fruit that's out there and they're going to do it anyway?
Yeah, I mean, good question. I would, I would say that most often, most of our applications that we look at, when they come in, our Chelsea Bunker usually takes care of those for us, and she's typically, these are people that we have spoken to in the community and said, hey, your facade's looking really bad and your building's very dated, and they'll say, yeah, but we can't really afford to do much with it. And we say, we can help you with that, let's come take a look at what you can't afford and what we can help you with. That's most of our projects. That is almost 100% of our sign projects. When our sign projects come in, they're mostly because we've gone out and said, we've done outreach and said, hey, if you'd like to upgrade your sign, then we can help you with that, if you'd like to, you know, spend some money and invest it in your property. Some of these projects without, I would say the majority of these projects without the, without the grant assistance, the ones that don't have to change because of legally or because of safety, wouldn't change.
Thank you. Additional questions on the Wheat Ridge Business District request in the budget? Mr. Pine?
I'll make a consensus, since the presenter probably shouldn't, and that we, consensus to fund the Wheat Ridge Business District at the requested level of $90,000.
Did you, one, two? Looks like we have consensus on that. Okay, good. That will, Mr. Goff, that provides the, the information that you need in order to complete your budget process for this year, right? This is it, this is the last one? Okay, good.
Mr. Mayor, can I make one comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Just extra, sorry. You know, in all fairness, I think, you know, one of my big things was budget neutral and how much extra are we going over budget? And, and I do feel like, I know the Wheat Ridge Carnation Festival presented today, but we really didn't know what we budgeted last year, so I'm just hoping, I don't want to be like a card laid is a card played, but I do think that is something that also needs the same type of consideration that we didn't have to give tonight, so I would like that at least as a part of the budget process, because, I mean, if they increase their budget 25% or 10% or 15%, then we probably need to also say, you know, maybe, let's see what we can do, go back to the drawing board kind of thing.
Look at comparables.
It was, that's what I thought, but I wasn't sure, but, okay, thank you, Chris. Eighty, eighty, that's what I was thinking, eighty, but last year was 100. Okay, thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Okay. With that, I believe that we, we complete the agenda items on our study session. Is there any further business?
I just, especially since we're not going to be in next week, did, did staff get all of the surveys on short-term rentals that?
We have not, we're still missing one. It's, we can move forward without it, but we don't know, they're anonymous, so we don't know who that is, but if it's one of you up there, please, if you'd like your comments as part of the survey results, is it you, Kristi? Did you raise your hand?
No.
Okay. It's George? Okay. Do you want to respond still? Do you need the link again? Okay, we'll send you the link.
You would resend the link and?
Yep, and you'll get it done, okay.
So we will, next, next Monday night is, is Labor Day, we will not, we will not meet, but we will be back at a meeting the following week on September the 9th, 2019. So, hope everyone has a great, a great holiday.
We have a special study session after that.
We're going to have another surprise special study session on the night, so come back and join us. Thank you so much, have a safe trip home.